Good evening, thank you. It is now 6:01. We will get started with our regular Thursday, April 10th City Council meeting. The City of Capitola, can I get a roll call please?
Councilmember Jensen.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Orbach.
Here.
Vice Mayor Peterson.
Here.
And Mayor Clark.
Here. Everybody, please stand and join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation for God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
additions and deletions to the agenda. Bring us to presentations. Tonight, we have a proclamation honoring Arts, Cultural and Creativity Month, honoring it for April 2025. I have a proclamation. This is the Art, Cultural and Creativity Month proclamation. Arts, Culture and Creative Month of April is in the 7th Annual Statewide Celebration. The City of Capitola believes the arts and cultural and creativity is essential to our thriving community. Benefits of the arts impact our hope of fostering the sense of community and personal fulfillment. Arts Council of Santa Cruz County partners with major state-level arts agencies such as California for the Arts, Creative California, California Arts Council. I'm proud to present this mayor's proclamation, and I think we have some folks here with us today. Would like to say something before we present the proclamation.
My name is Roy Holberg. I'm a recently appointed member of the Capitola's Art and Cultural Council, and I'm also the liaison with the Arts Council Santa Cruz and with Jim Brown. And I just want to say, if you look around Capitola, art is everywhere. It's incredible. And I think your council have been doing a great job supporting the arts, and I'm very happy for you to continue doing that.
Thank you, Roy.
And I'm Jim Brown, Executive Director of Arts Council, Santa Cruz County. And I think Roy said it all, but I'd just like to say on behalf of the Arts Council, thank you for honoring Arts, Culture and Creativity Month. It's a bit of a mouthful. And just want to acknowledge that we live in an incredibly creative community. Santa Cruz County has the fifth largest population of artists, of our per capita artists compared to any other city or any other county in the United States. So, so thank you for being supporters of the arts. Enjoy our creative community this month.
Jim, how we can do a photo op if you'd like.
Good evening. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Additional materials?
I've received 14 emails related to item 9A, one email 9B, and three emails for item 9C. All materials were made available to the council and the public before tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Next, that brings us to oral communications by members of the public. It's awesome to see we have a full house. Can I get a hand of everybody that think they might be wanting to speak this evening? Great, I think we can accommodate everybody. Thank you. You all have three minutes?
Oh, I don't need three minutes. I'm fast. Good evening, councilmembers, staff. I'm Gail Ortiz. I live in the River View Terrace area, and I'm hoping that all those who speak tonight can tell you what neighborhood they live in in Capitola, because I think there's a lot of Capitolans here tonight. I'd like to read you the Municipal Code, Section 8.72, and the purpose of it. Quote, it says, "It is the purpose of this chapter to improve safety and reduce traffic by keeping the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail in the Santa Cruz Branch Line Corridor within the city of Capitola while protecting the Capitola." End quote. remainder of the ordinance spells out how that should be achieved. I'll be danged if I can figure out how there's any part of that that's ambiguous. So, I just hope you agree with me. I'm a member of the Concerned Citizens of the Capitola Group. I can tell you, we're very committed. We're asking that the council uphold Municipal Code 8.72. I fear what will happen if this council votes to divert the trail off of this corridor. Please, I implore you, listen to your community. Know that we are prepared to begin recalls on all members of the council who vote to ignore the intent of Municipal Code 8.72. Capitola does not need this. No one needs this. We don't want this. Please, help us achieve that. Thank you.
Welcome, and state your name if you'd like it to be recorded.
My name is Sam Story, and I want to start by just saying it's nice to be back in this room, nice to see all your faces once again. But to start, as I mentioned, my name's Sam Story. Good evening, Mayor Clark, councilmembers, staff that are here. I'm also here to speak about the ordinance 8.72. And I thought I would like to maybe give you some history about that particular ordinance and the measure, the initiative that preceded it, my experience using the ordinance, the times that I was on the council, 2018 to 2022. Now, but as Gail asked the people to say what neighborhood they're from, I can't do that any longer. I'm no longer a resident of Capitola, but I am a business owner in Capitola, and I have my business in the village. In 2018, I came back on the council November of that year. And prior to my being seated, the Measure L initiative had already been voted by the voters of Capitola. But immediately before it was actually enacted as an ordinance, the city council at the time submitted a challenge to the courts on the ordinance or initiative as it was written. Those court cases, that case and the hearings dealt with the challenges to the initiative concerning vagueness, concerning being contrary to the Capitola general plan, and as well arguments such that it ties the council's hands. All those arguments were thrown out by the court, and they dismissed the city's challenge at the time. And that cost the city a great deal of money to go through that fight. And subsequent to that, I was seated on the council. We enacted Measure L as the ordinance 8.72. And over the years, there were discussions about, at times, should it apply, should it not apply, are there actions that would violate that particular ordinance? And we were always able to agree that there was a bright line. Should I, may I continue?
Unfortunately, the time is up. We have several other folks that we'd like to get to. If you could finish it up, please.
Yes, I will. Thank you. But I just wanted the history, the ordinance has been tested. It is in the books. I would implore you to enforce the ordinance. It's pretty direct and simple, and I don't think that it would hold up to an as-applied challenge if that's where you were thinking of going with this. And I think, I just want to say, that ordinance, that initiative, or the compact between the residents and the city council, and the city council should stay true to that and honor the citizens' wishes.
Thank you. Sure. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor Clark, and may it please the council. My name is Stephen Woodside. I have resided here. And before I say anything more, I want to talk a little bit about history from my perspective. My great-grandparents came here, first by ship to the East Coast from Sweden, then across the country by train, and then they settled after deciding San Francisco was too foggy. They took another train to the Santa Clara Valley, but they missed the sea. So they took a train to Capitola when Camp Capitola opened. And one of my cousins still owns one of the tent lots that my great-grandfather bought when he retired. So Capitola is in my blood, as are trains. Some of you may know I was county council in Santa Clara when all of the light rail, Bart extension, the Caltrain and all of that was being negotiated. I love train travel. I think it's great. Train travel is a wonderful means of transportation. It was great in the 19th century. It still works in places around the world in the 20th century, but in my opinion, it won't work here, not in my lifetime, not in my children's lifetime, and maybe not in my grandchildren's lifetime. As I look around the room, I just have to tell you, I love this place. My family has loved this place for decades. Look at the art. You just made a proclamation. Look at what people can see from the train, from the trestle. This is a world-class site for a place for people to walk and ride their bikes. And if I can jump now to the 21st century in transportation, we are changing so fast in this world of how we move from place to place, that I'm convinced that in my grandchildren's lifetime, maybe in my children's lifetime, people will be able to hail a Waymo or something like that, a group of people, and go destination to destination and not be on a fixed rail that frankly, here does not serve too many centers where lots of people need to commute. As we all know, the main commute for people working is over the hill. And there's a lot that happens here, but it's not along the rail. So having said that, last point, legal point. If you think the measure, the ordinance is ambiguous, you must interpret it in light of its intent. Those are the basic black-letter rules for interpreting something. You must look to intent. You cannot vary from intent. Gail read the purpose. That purpose is, has, it's law. You've got to follow it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Clark and members of the city council. My name is Bud Colligan. I have a business, Southswell Ventures, in Capitola, and I live in Live Oak. I've spent the last 10 years researching and being an activist for a safe and continuous trail on the rail corridor. I'd like to share with you two observations today. There is no interpretation of City Code 8.72 permitted, as Stephen said, the intent is clear. The words are abundantly clear. You are not taking all steps to preserve and utilize the corridor for active transportation as 8.72 says. You are not. And in fact, it's worse than that. The staff has been actively colluding with the RTC to do exactly the opposite. It's already, the city is already in violation of 8.72. The second observation I would make is, while I appreciate the town hall, I was not able to speak last week because my card wasn't called, but the meeting was dominated by answers from the RTC's so-called experts. I will remind you that these experts have been wrong about almost everything. They and their favorite sidekick, Friends of the Rail and Trail, for 13 years said that the rail corridor is wide enough. It's wide enough for both rail and trail. Now they say it's not, that we must detour onto city streets. The Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Plan of 2014 said the trail would cost $127 million. Guess what? It's now costing over $500 million if you take the estimates and the actual costs that we've already incurred. The 2015 rail transit feasibility study, remember, we were looking 10 years ago, was rail transit feasible, said we could build a passenger train for $176 million. Now, just the repairs and the replacement of trestles and bridges is over, well, it's $980 million, but you all know how public works projects go. It's easily double that by the time we would get to it in 20 to 30 years. They said for 10 years that rail banking will take too much time or is infeasible, when it's exactly what they should do to protect their own finances and the finances of the City of Capitola. Once rail banked, the federal government assumes all liability for property owner lawsuits in the corridor, and there will be plenty of them. All you have to do is go out to Pine Tree Lane and see the 20 or so houses out there, all with a easement for rail only, not for trail. They will all be suing. Do we, do the City of Capitola and the RTC have the funds to withstand lawsuits from all these property owners? And there are many, many more. If it's rail banked, all the problems are solved relative to cities' finances. I could go on and on, but this project is a classic example of politicians pushing an ideological agenda with no idea of the costs, the transit effectiveness, even though they've been told over and over again, or the legal ramifications of their actions, including what's been going on at the City of Capitola behind the scenes with staff. So rail bank the corridor and enforce 8.72 without delay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Clark, if I could request a brief pause, we're having a sound issue that's causing sound not to transmit to our stream in order to ensure that all of our speakers are being entered into the record this evening. If we could just take a two-minute pause so we could confer with our technician.
Thank you, folks. We'll be on a two-minute pause. Thank you.
Thanks for waiting. We should be okay to go.
Thank you, folks. I think we have the problem solved. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. Terry Thomas here, a 52 resident living on Park Avenue. Since we will be out of town for the special council meeting on April 17th, I'm here to voice my serious concerns about putting the proposed Option A and B RTC trail on Park Avenue. Not only is Park Avenue a speed corridor because it is rarely patrolled, but it already has a sidewalk and two bike lanes. These options will cause the loss of 26 parking spaces and the removal of nearly all the trees along the street. That will obviously necessitate installing a complete retaining wall to keep the compromised hillside in place. So you may as well stick the original plan, stick to the original plan of putting the trail on the coastal side of the tracks. The train proposed is getting more and more expensive and might become operable maybe in 30 years. Measure D funds are being eaten up by cost overruns on Highway 1. We don't need more taxes or bond measures to pay these escalating prices, and the current federal government may not be inclined to contribute. I believe that buses would be a more precise alternative to travel between here and Watsonville. At the April 3rd RTC meeting, which I listened to, it was directed by a board member that the staff come back soon with a full explanation of rail banking. I am asking, no, I'm begging you to postpone any decision regarding the placement of the trail until the issue of rail banking is fully disclosed and resolved. It may be possible to rail bank the trestle on Park Avenue, thus saving our town. Don't let the RTC rushing into making a decision because of their funding and timing issues. If that is the case, then I hope you decide to stick to the original plan of a coastal trail that has already been designed and is in the EIR. You must do what is best for Capitola, and that is to understand all the alternatives before you make a permanent decision. Thank you very much for your concern.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. My topic is also about the famous rail trail project. I just am going to take a little different lens on the funding issue. At the town hall on April 2nd, City Manager Goldstein shared, "What happens if Capitola says no? The more Capitola says no, the more project risk. Risk whether CTC would agree to project scope changes introduces funding risk." Very classic technique to try to sway people into thinking differently or present funding risk for things. So it got me thinking. I read the entire ATP grant that was applied for to get this funding, and let me just read you a few words from the grant application that concluded in the RTC getting the largest awarded ATP grant in California history. "This project uses best practices to completely separate bicycles and pedestrians from motor vehicle traffic by constructing a 12-foot-wide multi-use path in the rail right-of-way. This project constructs a Class 1 multi-use path within the rail line right-of-way, creating a separated multi-use path for bicycles and pedestrians." And I could go on. You should read it. It says it about 10 times, that this is what the intent of the application to ask for all that money was for. So the grant that is now at such risk for scope changes is changing away from the scope used to win the grant award. Staying true to the grant application and building the trail in the rail right-of-way versus introducing a realignment scope change is the best way to avoid funding risk. Don't let the age-old "funding is at risk" convince you to violate your oath of office next week. Stick with the plan and insist on the safe trail design that was documented to win the grant award. I'm a California taxpayer, and I don't want to see my California grant money used in a way that doesn't comply with what was requested when it was asked for. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Bertrand, and I live in the Cliffwood Heights neighborhood. Can I push that a little way? Make it shorter. I would very much appreciate the opportunity to meet with you for no more than 30 minutes, hopefully this weekend or before. Some of you have gotten back in touch with me already to schedule that. I'm retired now, but I worked at Ambag, a major transportation agency, for 14 years, including at the director level. So I am quite familiar with the details and regulations that surround state funding for transportation projects. I would like to discuss with you how you can support a win-win outcome, and more importantly, why this option is ultimately best in terms of the CTC grant funding, to preserve it, protect it, and optimally use it as it was awarded. My conversation with you will be of a technical nature so that you can be more educated in the detail and highly competitive CTC ATP grant. There are many rules and subcategories that could impact truly whether we lose part of this grant if you change the scope. This information will help you navigate the decision you are being asked to make. And also, to be clear, I firmly believe that ethically, it's important for a city, and it's its first duty to uphold the law of that city. America is a country based on the rules of law, for which I am proud. At our local level, I hope you will also enforce the rule of law. The most exciting thing I heard at the open house that you had for us, and I want to thank you all for doing that, was the Santa Cruz County city engineer in charge of this project clearly stood up in front of all of us and said, "We can do the original plan. And if your board decides not to vote for this, we can do that, and we'll start right away." When I heard that, I was so relieved. It was like, they're not saying they can't do it. They clearly said in front of all of us, they can do the original plan. So if they can do the original plan, it truly is a win-win outcome for them to do the original plan, and then you can uphold the law in Capitola. But if you're thinking of not doing the original plan, I want to discuss with you the technical details that actually could put the grant at risk. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate you making this hard decision.
Welcome.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Matt Arthur. I'm a 54-year resident, 31 years up in the jewel box currently, a business owner in the village. I wanted to share that Capitola Village and the Wharf BIA Business Improvement Area Board had our monthly meeting this morning. The BIA consists of over 180 businesses, individual businesses. We reviewed the intent of Municipal Code 8.72, which is to, which is to improve safety and reduce traffic, keeping the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Trail in the trail corridor within the city of Capitola while protecting the Capitola trestle. The motion was made at our meeting and seconded to favor the city be held accountable to govern according to the code and not allow trail detours through the city streets of Capitola. The board took a vote and unanimously approved the motion. Village business owners are very concerned about how a violation of the code will impact businesses and the culture of our city. Please uphold the oath of, your oath of office, and do not support staff recommendations that would risk that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Rodney Wardsock, Capitola Candy Company, business owner for nine years down in the village, and we're looking to expand, well, we are expanding right now, Coca-Cola and Sorata chocolates at 312 Capitola Avenue. That wouldn't be happening if I would have known this was happening, honestly. I've been fooled for a while. I was in complete support of this whole RTC thing, complete support. More people, the better. I had no idea there was one parking spot being taken out. One parking spot is nothing compared to even 2,000 bikes. They're not taking home any retail. They're not taking home any to-go anything. They're there for the visual experience, and that's it. That's, that's nothing for our economic development, our economic stability, nothing. It's frustrating because this whole time, honestly, all of you have not communicated this enough with us, with the city, all of you. You, Margot, you're down there with us, you know. I mean, you guys couldn't handle 20 bikes at Capitola Candy Company, and I'm looking at you, Sarah, because we had 20 bikes at Capitola Candy Company that they couldn't handle during the $3 boba and $1 cup of noodle days. We had big issues, like huge issues. You think I'm not going to sell $1 bobas if we have bikes going by and I'm not going to call for a crowd to make our business happen? Like, it's going to be a huge problem, huge. You know this more than anybody, Margot. I depend on you for this, honestly. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. If I could take a moment and just have everybody refrain from applauding so we can get through this. We're already over at 30 minutes, but I want to give everybody a chance to speak, so if we could just keep it down a bit, I would appreciate it. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I am a resident. I sent a bio to you to say who I was so I could have more time to speak. I am so proud to be with this group of people because I feel like there's knowledge, integrity, and people that, that I am honored to be with. So thank you all for being here. Being a resident on Depot Hill, I've had two different businesses in Capitola. I've been here since 1964. I love this town. My wife is a third-generation Capitola resident. Her families have been here three generations. I'm feeling that I needed to speak because I didn't understand the... I'm feeling that I needed to speak because I didn't understand the number of people that were really adamantly opposing this, and that's why I'm here. Right now, my granddaughter just came in from LA, and I really want to be with her. But this was more important to me tonight. I will keep it really quick. To me, we don't allow skateboarders because some little old lady got hit and killed. We have had people hit with bicycles, and now we're thinking of putting this all through the village? It just seems absurd, I mean, that we would increase the risk of people getting hurt. And I'll leave on closing. I don't know, you're very young. You're all much too young, as far as I'm concerned, and you probably don't remember a man named Max Walden. Anybody remember Max Walden? Anybody? Max Walden wanted to take a barge and sink it right next to the Capitola Pier. He was an entrepreneur trying to make big-time money. Capitola had the wisdom and the strength to say, "We don't want that here now." I just would like you to also have that same wisdom and understanding of the situation and know that this would be a mistake to run the trail through the village. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Mike Morrissey, resident, live on Depot Hill, taxpayer, property owner, and registered voter. So I spent 11 hours on a plane this week, so I had, and plus with great Wi-Fi, I had a chance to do some surfing of the Capitola websites. I had a chance to watch some videos. In fact, I watched the August 9th, 2018, City Council meeting to see how all this stuff started back in the day. So really interesting, very educational. I would encourage you, if you have time, to do that because I think perspective of time is really important. I landed on the City Council homepage, which was pretty interesting. So the first paragraph has the basics, you know, five council members, how we do elections, that kind of stuff. Second paragraph, I thought, was really good, so I'm going to read it to you, okay, in case you haven't seen it recently. "Capitola is a general law city. Its council must act within the framework of limitations and procedures established by state law." This is the good part. "Local laws are established by ordinance and are compiled in a book called the Municipal Code. These laws are enforceable by the city, and violations thereof constitute an infraction. Other directives and policies of the City Council are recorded in the City Council Resolutions and Council Minutes." Right? Key phrases, key sentences around local laws, Municipal Code, laws are enforceable, okay? In my journeys east, in my time on the plane, I also had a chance to watch the two-plus hours of the Town Hall meeting. I have to say, I was a little disappointed with the two-minute perfunctory review of Measure L, and I find using that term a lot in that setting really is a distraction from the fact that it's not up for election again. That was settled in 2018. It's Capitola Municipal Code Ordinance or Chapter 8.72. The interpretation of that, apparently, at least from the opinion of the city attorney, is up to you guys. I think using the standards that you heard from Steve and Sam, plain, ordinary language, it's pretty obvious what's being said there, what the intent is. And I think it's super important that the narrative that we've heard for years, it's written vague, it's unenforceable. I've heard people in this room and prior council members say it's unconstitutional. I sent you all a letter this week as well that I think is a very good summary of the brief that Shoot Mahaly filed in 2018, the lawyers for, I guess, the defendants in that case where the Measure L, putting it on the election, was actually litigated. I would encourage you all to read that very carefully to understand the other side of that story. Sam talked about it at a high level. I sent it to you. My lawyers at Fenton Keller gave that to me, and I'm giving it to you. Please take the time and read that, understand what you're up against. The litigation cost that you guys spent in 2018...
Thank you, Sarah, if you can wrap it up.
...fraction of what you'll spend if you litigate this and you lose, okay? Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello. I almost feel like I don't need that introduction, but you all know me, Kevin Maguire, Cliffwood Heights. Been here since '74, so 50, almost 51 years. First off, we can applaud now. If you're a Capitola concerned citizen, applaud, please. So yeah, we heard a lot about Measure L and 8.72, and the good thing with the Freedom of Information Act, we can see some of the city staff talking to Kimberly Horn about maybe Measure L and having some sidebars and some conversations, so we've got to dig into that. But I want to talk about the feasibility concerns around Park Avenue trail alignment, but the legal, environmental, and policy risks that now surround this plan. On May 26, 2022, city planners in writing warned Kimberly Horn that Park Avenue, as an arterial road, has limited space for traffic calming due to its need to maintain a Class 2 bike lane and one-vehicle lane in each direction. This statement is not just planning opinion, it's warning based on real design and constraints and safety standards. So we need to pause and look at that. Let's be clear, Park Avenue is constrained arterial. If the city previously said it couldn't accommodate additional safety features like bulb-outs, Class 4 bike lanes, or pedestrian buffers, how can we now reroute major multi-use trails onto the same corridor and claim it safe? This was brought up in the September 8, 2022, Council meeting with Mayor Sam Storey there, and you can go back and watch that and see what was the questions there and the problems of the Class 4. Means there's a buffer there, the street sweepers can't make that safe. Even more concerning, there's no improvement plan on the inland side where this trail detoured is proposed. If safety is a top priority, then why is the most vulnerable section of Park Avenue getting zero upgrades? The original 2021 traffic calming plan addressed the entire corridor. That scope has quietly disappeared. We're now only upgrading where the trail is visible, not where residents live. This is a reactive retrofit, not a comprehensive plan. But it goes deeper. Class 2 bike lanes on arterial roads are legally protected facilities. If they were constructed using public funds, as Park Avenue were, they must be maintained or replaced with equivalent or better facilities. Downgrading a Class 2 or forcing cyclists to disjoin a Class 1 segment may violate Caltrans Highway Design Manual Guidance, Sequoia mitigation obligations, funding source requirements, and the City Zone General Plan Policies, including MO 2.1 and MO 2.4, which requires that biking, walking remain routine priorities in roadway maintenance and improvements. And let's not forget, if the existing Class 2 bike lanes were funded with federal, state, or ATP dollars, removing, altering, require repayment, may be triggered environmental evaluation. Based on those things, we need to pause. We don't have all the information.
Thank you, sir.
And we didn't get the questions answered at this last Town Hall that you guys put in motion. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. I play basketball at J.C. Park several times a week, not every day, but I try many times to play as possible. There was a problem that I pointed out to the project manager, I think, of City of Capitola, its vandalism on tearing stuff apart in the men's restroom and destroying property which belongs to Capitola City. I don't think that the taxpayer should be required to repair all these damages, you know. I think the PD must catch the people who do that, who destroy property on Capitola J.C. Park. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Welcome.
Last one. Dave Fox, resident here for 48 years. I would just like some clarification from the city attorney. During that last meeting we had, she said she pretty much referred that you gentlemen and ladies have the ability to overrule the ordinances and left a lot of people going, "Well, that the attorney says they can overrule the law?" Then a lot of people from out of town went, "Well, let's put the pressure on the Capitola City Council." So I would like some clarification from you, why you told that to the public.
Sir, we're just in public comment mode. We won't be answering questions.
Good afternoon. How's everybody doing? I just want to say, a little off-topic a little bit, I want to thank our chief for coming to our girls' volleyball game and doing the first serve. Girls really liked that, appreciate that. Mr. Jensen, appreciate you coming to our flag football game, doing the coin toss. I know you just got out of surgery, but I appreciate that as well, too. Council members, we're starting fourth quarter. It's sports at New Brighton, boys' volleyball, track, and girls' softball. Also, I wanted to let the community know that day one started on our new sports facility at New Brighton Middle School, so if you see the fences out there, that's what's going on. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. That'll bring us... to staff comments.
I believe our chief has a couple announcements for us this evening.
Welcome, chief.
Thank you. Gentlemen, can you come up here, please? You know who you are. So totally off-topic of everything everyone's talking about, but I'm glad you all are still here because I want to introduce to you one of your new officers, Officer Roger Swingle. Gentlemen, right here. I want to challenge you to say his name right. And anyway, Roger came to us from the Santa Cruz County Jail recently, and...
Congratulations.
You know, every time I say that, I don't seem to learn my lesson, so anyways. He worked in corrections, and so, and I just, he's a longtime Santa Cruz County resident. I think he's going to bring a wealth of knowledge. Our folks that who have worked in corrections have typically done very well in our city, and I just want to welcome to the team. He just started the training program, and make a comment that, you know, Roger came to us because of our officers, and our officers are some of the finest recruiting tools that we have. And so the fact that he chose to come this way, we're happy to have him, and so when you see him, please be kind. And so just congratulations, and I look forward to watching you succeed in our training program. That's it. And now for your 15-minute speech. And he came in early for graveyard, so we appreciate that. And lastly, I just want to also, for those of you that have had the pleasure of the last six years of meeting Mike Kilroy, who is ending his six-year career with us, but this was his second career in law enforcement. He served with the Phoenix Police Department for 20 years. I typically say 25, I just add that on. Yeah, you have gray hair. But, you know, he left Phoenix Police Department, which is a huge agency, to sail around with his lovely wife and two daughters, and when he decided to come back into law enforcement, he chose us. We were going to be the only time that he would actually consider coming back. And some of the great accomplishments that he's had, he's, tomorrow is his last day, and some of the things that he's brought to us have been a real leap in technology. We were talking today about some of the things he's proud of, our drone program, our automated license plate reader programs. He's just really helped us to advance in technology, which makes it no surprise that he's going to start his third career working for Axon. And if you guys have heard of Axon, they're taking over the police world of technology. Our body cameras we wear are made by Axon. All of our technology is. And so I just want to publicly say goodbye to him and his service. He's been a huge, close friend and confidant to me. He's moved up through the ranks in the last six years, officer to sergeant to operations captain, administrative captain, which means he shares a wall with me, so he has to listen to me all day. And he's just been a great friend, a great support. We lovingly call him Uncle Mike with our police department, so just thank you for your service, and I wish you well in this next chapter of your life. And Lisa, you too.
I'll keep it quick so I don't derail the meeting, but... Mayor, Council, and City staff, I just want to say thank you. A little over six years ago, Chief Terry McManus introduced me and to a different council. And at that point, I had been in training with my training officer for about three weeks, and we had seen some things that were surprising for the sleepy little beach town that Capitola was sold to me as. And I stood in front of council and said that I was amazed, the things that the officers are expected and do well here, given the number of staff that we have at the police department. And six years later, I'm still amazed at the amount of work that these guys do, day after day, keeping our community safe, serving the community, forging relationships, and just being good partners with the city. So it's an excellent department. Thank you, Sarah, for towing me along. You had a big part in the success that I had here. I really appreciate that. Chief Ryan is my third chief here. They're all a little different. I won't say who my favorite was, but I do have a favorite. But I'll keep it brief. I know you guys have some fun things on the agenda to get to, so thank you very much, and I'll miss you all.
Thank you. Captain Kilroy, thank you for your service. Next, we will, oh, we have more staff. Excellent, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Just a really quick comment. So at last, budget goals, City Council requested that we do a little bit of community outreach regarding pickleball in preparation for our upcoming budget season in a few months. So members of the public are encouraged to go to the city website and find our pickleball survey. Please provide answers and comments so that we can know what is the future of pickleball for Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That'll bring us to council comments, and we'll start on this side.
Just have a quick update from the RTC that on April 17, the off-ramp at Park Avenue, heading southbound, will be closed. This is expected to be closed for six months. Thank you. Not my decision.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. That was one of my questions I had, and so I appreciate that. Was the city notified about that off-ramp closure? I mean, it looks like we've been through all these challenges of traffic, and we thought we were kind of over the traffic debacle going up Bay Avenue with the on-ramp, and then just to find out after they opened it, what, three weeks ago, now they're closing northbound? So I was wondering, were we aware of that, or the one at Park Avenue?
I'm seeing head shakes from public works. That would have been the first communications to the city about that.
In that six months, you said, Councilman Peterson, how long will it be closed for? All right, well, maybe we can communicate our concerns with that and what's a lack of planning and what other things are going on in our city. We're trying, I think we're trying to understand traffic flow patterns, and it seems like now another six months until we can probably address that again. And then just real quick, my Monterey Bay Air Resource Board meeting was canceled this month, and so I have nothing to report on that item, so thank you.
Okay, my comment's going to be that it's become very apparent that we need to identify Measure L before our next special City Council meeting. We need to thoroughly look at our City Municipal Code 8.72. We need to thoroughly look at our city municipal code 8.72, and it definitely needs to become a discussion, not just for the citizens, but for the council. So if we could agendize that for our next special meeting?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so on the 17th, you have a special meeting scheduled already. We can add it to that agenda. I think if we were going to add something to the agenda, we probably would want to consider an earlier start time or something, just because I think we'd probably get a lot of public comments around that.
I think, seeing everybody here, we will. If we can start at 5:00?
5:00 works for staff.
And again, if we do that, we may not let everybody speak for three minutes because as you saw, we went well over our 30 minutes. So we probably would limit it to two minutes for comments at the next meeting. So if we could do that?
One other thing is because the agenda packet will be published tomorrow, I don't think we can put out much in the way of information beyond what's already been put out. You know, if there's something additional, I think we just have to be able to focus on the information that's already available in terms of our agenda packet, but we can put it on the agenda for sure when we publish it tomorrow.
I think the soonest I can make here is probably 5:15 because of work.
5:15 works for council?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do 5:15 start time for our meeting on the 17th, next Thursday.
Thank you. That is all the comment I have for this evening, so... And now bring us to consent items.
I can move the consent items 8A.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Bring just the general government. 9A, Grand Avenue pathway.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Here, item before you this evening is talk about the future of the Grand Avenue pathway. This is an image from 1972 of the area in question when there was still a full operational residential roadway on the cliff face. Next slide. It's changed quite a bit since then. So currently, there is a pedestrian path from Central to Oakland Avenues due to erosion. There's been multiple closures since the 1980s. And the 1980s is when it was closed for vehicular traffic, and it's had multiple closures and changes since then. It is part of the California Coastal Trail, which is a series of bike-imped trails up and down the state of California. And previous efforts, including a seawall, have not moved forward with the city, mostly citing effectiveness over time and environmental impacts of such a large project. Next slide. So this is the area currently in question. You may recall, we had a failure here in the winter of 2022, 2023. This was included in your agenda packet. This is the section between Saxon and Oakland Avenues. I'm not sure how well you can see this image on the screen, but if you see the kind of red and purple line, that is where it has eroded to to date. The black line was the top of the bluff in 2022, and the blue line is the top of the bluff in 1999. So in the most constrained or most part, most erosion loss since 1999, there's been about 20 feet lost. And there's approximately 20 feet between the... within the right-of-way remaining on the most constrained portion of this trail. Next slide. So a little bit of a physics lesson this evening. So the bluff retreat in this area and in many areas of Santa Cruz County really has two layers. There's a marine terrace deposit, which is kind of soft and squishy soil, and then the rock, bedrock formation underneath. So erosion occurs in two places, both from wave action below, which, if you can see the vertical lines, kind of over time creates caves and shears off the bedrock formation. Then the top formation, the marine terrace deposit, tends to come off when the base of it comes off. And over time, also erodes from the top from saturation, severe storms, earthquakes, if we're to have any. And we estimate, geologists estimate, that the angle there will be 38 degrees as it settles out over time. So this is the most steep loose soil can be stabilized on its, without reinforcement. Next slide. And you can very clearly see this here. This is just an image showing you that you can visually, from the beach on a low tide, see the bedrock formation in that marine terrace deposits on the cliff. This is an image from 2023. And then the bottom right of that image is where we had our last landslide there over the winter. Next slide. And this is on the bottom currently of Hollister Avenue. This was the best example I could find of last week, where you can kind of see where those caves are forming there from the wave formation, kind of that notch area, which over time will cause that part of the hillside to collapse. Next slide. So most recently, in February 2025, severe storms caused some bluff failures in the same area between Saxon and Oakland Avenues. It undermined the pathway there, right up close to the fence that was relocated in 2023. Fortunately, none of the fence was lost in this cliff loss, but it doesn't, it's not secure or safe, and so it has been closed to pedestrians since that time. Next slide. Still easier to see in this image how it's undermined there. The pavement from the original roadway still exists, but you can see that there's a hole coming in over there. So obviously, the pathway is on top of a narrow bluff. There's limited space for relocation. There are private encroachments into the right-of-way, so like lawn areas, plantings, some hardscape of that nature, which currently restrict the available space for the pathway. Next slide. This is the current area where it was, their failure was, we did replace some of the storm drainage system that came out with this last collapse. So we redid the storm drain inlet or the, where the storm water goes into. And then this is the outfall. The outfall is now fully lined. It was a corrugated metal pipe, which obviously, over time, erodes. It is fully lined now with this plastic pipe that extends down to the bedrock there. Next slide. So this is that same figure we showed before when we were talking about erosion. And this is specific to this area between Saxon and Oakland Avenues. So there you can see the storm drain inlet and both the outfall pipes. So the storm drain inlet is the red arrow, and the outfall pipe is the purple arrow. And we see unmitigated that erosion over time will go all the way back to where that outfall, or to where the inlet is. So we'd expect between one and six years, kind of depending on erosion, which can be gradual over time, but also episodic, depending on rainfall and earthquakes and that kind of thing, for the whole pathway to be lost. Adjacent to that, again, is the right-of-way. That red dash line there is approximately where the property lines are. It does vary how much right-of-way has private encroachments in it. In this particular location, it's about eight feet. Next slide, please. Other areas of the pathway and previous pathway between Oakland and Hollister Avenue, which was closed in 2017, has continued to road over time. There's approximately about three feet of available right-of-way in the most constrained area on this segment of the pathway. Next slide. And then between Central and Saxon Avenues, there's quite a bit more right-of-way and also quite a bit more bluff face. So it is in less danger of erosion. Though erosion obviously still occurs on this section of trailway. There's more right-of-way and more cliff face. Next slide. So there's a few options to address the pathway here on Depot Hill. I will say, there really is no, no project option for this pathway. Challenges with relocating the pathlet inlet, so simply just taking out the encroachments and moving the pathway to where that was, is really that there needs to be an engineered design. There's drainage there that needs to be considered by both geology, a geologist and engineer, to make sure that we're not exacerbating the erosion. There's also slope stability issues, per the geologist's report included in your agenda packet, and just safe alignment in general. Any engineering recommendation that we receive would include slope stabilization. To do the project without slope stabilization gets us back to that one-to-six-year lifespan of the pathway and really a high failure risk because there was no engineering done to just move the pathway. The estimated cost for this, including removing all of the encroachments, establishing a pathway, fixing the drainage, and really doing a lot of this by handwork because, per recommendations we've already received, anything within 15 feet of the bluff face should not be using heavy machinery, puts this cost at about $200,000 to $300,000 in that range. Next slide. If council were to move forward with an engineered pathway, again, we still have a lot of those project complexities about drainage, slope, and safety that would be addressed by a design engineer. Any of these options, this and the previous option would include removing these easements, which are the property of the city, but also have the opportunity for potential litigation if those property owners are not willing to remove their encroachments. The cost estimate for this kind of stabilized path, which would be something with micro piles, would be in the multimillion-dollar range. Again, due to constrained site, the specialized labor having to do the drainage. And even with those current standards, it may only last up to 20 years. Next slide. Without, I'm sorry, without stabilization somewhere else on the bluff face. Other alternatives that the council may want to consider is permanent closure, as was done in the other section of pathway in 2017. We'd still want to do some drainage improvements as the drainage improvements that we have right now are, have failed several times. We want something more stable for the longer term. It would require a coastal development permit. All of these options would really require a coastal development permit, but this one would particularly also require mitigation. There would be loss of coastal access, and it could also be appealed. Cost for this is approximately in the $100,000 range, depending on what that mitigation would be, and including the drainage modification. Another option would be bluff stabilization, so really revisiting those options to both stabilize on the top and bottom of the cliffside. Those are many, many, millions-of-dollar projects, similar to the Cliff Drive project we have going on right now. Next slide. So here are the options in an easy-to-read table. Again, there really is no, no project option here. Even with a permanent closure, the likelihood that we would need to do drainage improvements and mitigation is still high. And then the other options with varying costs and risks for the city. And I believe that is my last slide, so I am willing to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Council questions?
Yeah, two questions. First question, on a project like this, no matter what the scope is, what's the opportunity of grants and funding for something like this? If needed, if it was a $5 million project, just for a number, what's the process and what's the potential possibilities of receiving grant funding?
Sure. So there are grants available, mostly from the Coastal Conservancy for coastal access. They would consider the lifespan of what those improvements would be. So, and they're also very competitive. So yes, those grant fundings do exist. They tend not to be in the multimillions-of-dollar range. They tend to be $2 million or less. And again, depending on the lifespan, we could show to the conservancy, they may or may not opt to fund a project.
And then my final question is a two-parter. One part would be regarding, there's a trail that goes through the county, I think, that goes up there along that area. What's the name of that trail? Do you know, is it the Monterey?
The California Coastal Trail?
Is that what they call it? Sorry.
Yes.
And then with that, does Coastal Commission have, any one of these staffs? I know it's up there, Coastal Commission would be contacted. Would they have enforcement or involvement on if one of the ideas were to close down, temporary or permanent? What's their involvement in that process, and what's the interaction with the city with that?
So the Coastal Commission, just based on its location, would be involved in any kind of closure or mitigation that we do in that area. It's considered, Coastal Commission is considered with vertical and horizontal access to the coast, even though it's not down to the beach, they do consider that coastal access.
Thank you.
Thanks for presenting, Jessica. So it sounds like the storm drainage has been replaced multiple times and have failed multiple times. What can we do to improve the drainage situation?
That is something we'd also need engineer. We have consistently maintained the drainage there. The drainage that exists there is from when the street was there originally. So that's what it was intended to support. So we have replaced the drain inlet, we have replaced the pipe. But really, we would want something to last longer. So we would need an engineer to do some kind of evaluation of how to make that more stable over time, potentially can or will be varying it further over the bluff face.
And I believe Public Works Director, previous Public Works Director, has looked into this, correct? He's looked into a storm drainage maintenance district and looked at the possibility of capturing and directing storm water away from the coastal bluff to reduce erosion. Can you talk about it, Jamie, in terms of what happened?
So I haven't been able to look into it too. And yeah, but I know a previous Public Works Director, as you said, did look into a sort of like Depot Hill wide drainage program to take the drainage back towards Escalona and then down towards Monterey. I remember it, there was very cost prohibitive. And so that was the preliminary engineering work, I believe, was done. It may have been 20 years ago, may have been 15 years ago. I can't remember exactly when, but we could certainly look into that if you were curious.
So if it was millions of dollars, how would it be paid?
Well, that's a good question. That was part of the reason, I think, that we never proceeded with the project was because the funding wasn't available. There are the opportunity to form assessment districts for things like this. You know, the affected neighborhoods could form an assessment district that ultimately pays over time for the bonds to do something like this. But whether or not that's feasible in this case, I don't know. I don't know what the cost would be, and I don't know how much the assessment district could raise. I don't know if the community would want to support it. A lot of unknowns.
Thank you. Would the Coastal Commission even allow for placement of rip raft at the base of the cliff? Jessica?
So that's a good question. There is a difference with the Coastal Commission between protecting private properties and protecting public infrastructure. That's one of the reasons that we're able to move forward with the Cliff Drive project because it's protecting a public arterial, that is a, you know, a first-response route, that kind of thing. This would still be protecting something that's of the public's interest, of the city's interest. So I wouldn't say it is impossible to permit something like that, but it still would be a heavy lift considering what they think the overall benefit would be. It's not as strong of an argument as, say, something like Cliff Drive.
What is the current infrastructure to promote public access along Grand Ave? Is there a designated parking area? Do you know the utilization rate of the public?
From the public? So we don't track visitors to this area, and there is no parking other than the neighborhood parking. The Depot Hill stairs do lead from the village up to that oversight look area. So I do think we encourage the public to go up there, but there is no other specific infrastructure that promotes the use of this.
I also just want to point out that there is a California Coastal Commission's 2024 Sea Level Rise Policy Guidance Update that they published last year. And there is documentation, if anyone is interested, in Pages 47 that talk about avoiding significant coastal hazard risk bluffs. If it's, if the lifespan is short, they really do not support development along these bluffs. But I am curious, because this is still an asset to our community, obviously, the views are... What do I say this? It's great. So, are we able to put movable, relocatable amenities like benches so that the public can still utilize that space? Because it sounds like it's going to fall in. Can we have benches there and binoculars there that our community can still utilize?
So to be, you mean, in absence of moving the pathway, could we do other enhancements? So yes, and that would likely be, if we were to close the pathway, that would likely be a mitigation, is improvement of some other coastal access use.
Questions over here?
Yeah, I had a couple. So we talked about the encroachments.
So we talked about the encroachments. So removing the encroachments, what, is that the only thing we would have to do to sort of buy time? Or I'm guessing we still need to look into the drainage regardless of the encroachment removal?
Yes. So the drainage needs, with any of these paths, needs to be looked into regardless.
Okay. And the encroachments, removal of the encroachments should not, the city shouldn't incur those fees technically?
Correct.
Okay. If that was something that was done in a preliminary stage while we sort of get the engineering design, would that then allow us to open the path? Would it then be more secure if we're setting the path further back? Or would that still, once the encroachments are gone, then we could look into it? Or what would like a timeline like that look like? If I'm asking that in the right way?
So are you suggesting moving the pathway and then doing an engineering design?
Yeah, or just, just to allow for more access? If, if the first step would be to remove the encroachments while we're completing design review or drainage review? Is that something that we could move forward with?
I wouldn't recommend reestablishing the pathway without the engineering design. So yes, like in the interim, which may take quite a while to get all the encroachments removed. That's something we'd want to move on in the early stages, but I wouldn't recommend establishing a path prior to having an engineering design.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is that engineering design the millions of dollars that we're talking about?
To have a stabilized pathway, yes, would be a...
Millions of dollars.
Not as much as a full bluff stabilization, but still would be in the millions type project.
Because of how tedious it would be? There, we can't use machinery because of the sensitivity of the bluff, so it's all hand?
Much of it, yes. And also just being a constrained space, yes.
Just clarification to your question. Was it about what the cost for the engineering or for the path? Was it engineering?
I think from my understanding, Jessica's saying we need the engineering for the path.
But the engineering wasn't millions?
Oh, no, the project is a...
Exactly. The project's millions, the engineering is far less. I mean, I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
That kind of leads into my question a little bit. I'm curious if you have an estimate of the amount of money that would be required to get us to a point where we would be eligible for grant funding for the engineered project proposal? Does that make sense?
It does, and that's a good question. Typically, engineering fees are around 10% of a project total.
And, and once we met that 10% goal of the low millions, then that would put us in a good place to apply for and receive grant funding for the rest. Yeah.
I think one of the things to keep in mind is something that Director Khan mentioned is that often if we're engineering something that's like got a 10 to 20 year lifespan, which is, I think, what we were estimating for that project, I think it would be difficult to end up getting grant funding in the end. Usually with grant funding, they want to look at some sort of longer term commitment for maintenance. And if we were engineering something that we said, okay, this is the lifespan on it, it's a pretty, pretty short lifespan for something like that.
And we're unlikely to get funding for bluff stabilization in the many millions.
Yeah, so you'll recall that we have funding from the Federal Highway Administration for the Cliff Drive Bluff Stabilization Project. I think we're around the 2 to 12 million range at this stage right now. But the reason why that was competitive was that was, that was to protect an arterial for first responders, emergency evacuation, major infrastructure, both high pressure sewer main going out and low pressure sewer main coming in. Some really, the big things are in that road.
So would it be possible to look into specific grant funding opportunities? And, you know, look at the criteria and come back to us with a better understanding of what specific opportunities may exist and the likelihood of success when we're looking at the 10 to 20 year project scope?
Sure, if that's the council's direction, we could look into that.
How much staff time would that take? I, I know that we have a lot of priority projects as well. I just want to be mindful of staff's time and how much we're spending to look into all these options when, you know, the lifespan is bleak.
So it would vary on council direction. To come back with what grants are available and what types of projects have been funded by the Coastal Conservancy is not a heavy lift. But if we start going down the path of removing encroachments, that's not just public works staff, that's also legal staff, that it becomes a significant project. And again, there is like no, no project alternative here. Any of these are going to take some staff time, and it just depends on council direction as to how much.
Thank you. I guess we'll leave the rest for deliberation. We'll be taking it to public comment at this time. Welcome.
Good evening. I live next door to Skip Allen, who's been very involved in this trail project. And he wanted to be here tonight, but he got a hot date and asked me to come. As I said earlier, I've lived here for 48 years. I don't reside on Depot Hill. I live out on McCormick. I walk the trail almost every day, and I meet all kinds of friends and neighbors. It's really, really a nice place to keep everybody together as city members. And a lot of tourists come up there and walk the trail. And last year, Public Works stated that if this happened, they would have them remove those front yard things. And then, and it was stated that it would be a cost burden on the homeowners, not on the city whatsoever. And that has been said for about 10 years now. So I don't understand when anybody says there's a burden on the city. It's a burden on the homeowners because they've been granted all these years to utilize that property. And I really think it would be nice to move ahead and tell them, sorry, your time's up. Now, we all know that that's very limited. I lived here, that road I used to walk down when I moved here. And it's not going to stop. It's going to eventually start going into their front yard. And yes, we are going to lose that trail. Like you're so concerned about timeline. I bet you we could get another 15, 20 years out of it if we utilize the whole land. And that's really a good thing for the people of Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. So those were some really good comments. We live on the bluff. We've spent a lot of time studying how to minimize erosion. I don't look at the timeline as bleak at all. I think the 10, 15, 20 year option is, is real, and that's what we're counting on. We've put a lot of money into drainage on our property, and I think that's going to pay off in the long term. I think the problem here is drainage. You've got to get the water off the hill, one way or the other. And I think that's incumbent upon the city to make the right investments and do the right maintenance consistently. It's not a one time, once every five years, look under the bluff and see what's happening. You've got to be on that all the time, just like we are as property owners. So I think it's worth the time. We walk that a lot. I see so many people with their dogs and their kids and their strollers and their grandmas walking there, stopping. You can see dolphins, you can see whales, you can see sea lions. It's a huge asset for the community. Let's invest in that. Let's take some of the money that we've got and some of the expertise that we have and make this work, right? You've got to move the water out over the bluff. When I saw that one slide with the drain going directly into the dirt, well, of course, you're going to have erosion because the water action, mass action, especially once it's saturated, it's gone, okay? You've got to keep that as unsaturated as possible, especially in the winter. If it's wet to begin with and you get more rain, it's gone. So it's physics, it's, it's geology, this is all known stuff. We can, we can make this last a long time and have this be an asset for the community for years, if not decades to come, if we make the right investments and we're really diligent about taking care of it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor. Staff? I'm Stan Kenner. I've lived in Depot Hill for 30 years. I agree with both of the speakers. I'm not going to reiterate everything they said, but I would like to bring up the fact that we were here back in, when we built the fence, Jerry? 2023, is that right? And when we were here, Jamie and Public Works Jessica said that they would put it on the agenda to get the easements removed in the spring and/or the fall of that year, and it was not done. And you guys continue pushing the road, pushing it down the road, down the road, down the road, and you're not doing anything about it. And here we are again because the drain collapsed and it's eroded back. And all that hard work we put into it is now for naught. And we're screwed, and we don't have our path. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Tom Parker, I live at 306 Grand Avenue. 20 years ago, I woke up to a loud thump and looked outside, and that original 15 or 18 inch steel pipe had broken off, and the cliff was coming apart. It was the weekend. I called a council member that I knew. He said, call back when Public Works opens. I said, if we wait till then, the cliff will be gone. So Granite Crew was out there about an hour later, and I knew the head of the crew. And I said, what are you, what are you doing here, Grady? And he says, well, we're putting in a temporary fix to the drainage. We're now 20 years down the road, and five temporary fixes later. The fence that was put in a couple of years ago, when we put it in, it had five feet, maybe six feet from the cliff. It's now right on the cliff because that soft topsoil, whenever that temporary fix breaks again, blows out all the soft soil on the top. So rather than the nine to 11 inches a year that the original geological reports suggested, what we're losing, what we've lost since Jerry and the neighborhood put in that fence is about six feet, not nine inches, six feet. And so without, I was happy to see Jessica talk about improving the drainage in a way that works. Right now, I don't know whether that'll be enough, and I don't know how committed the city is to keeping our path. But it's been a resource that's invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you. So no further public comment? We'll bring it back to council deliberation.
I had a question. I know recently, well, when we went through the storms in 2023, there was, I don't know if it was grant funding, but it was like a hazard mitigation funding. Did we, did we just apply for that? Because it was in, for that bluff on that side because of issues that we had after the storm.
Are you speaking to the funding that was used to do that repair?
I guess maybe that's, yeah. So is that, is hazard mitigation funding something that we can possibly look into?
I'm not sure that this asset is in our hazard mitigation plan off the top of my head.
Okay, got you. Well, that being said, I, I just wanted to clarify. I wasn't assuming that the city would assume financial responsibility for removing the easements. I have just been under the impression that we can go to the public and ask those homeowners to start the process themselves, but there does lie the risk that they would then come back to the city and potentially enter some litigation with us based on them not wanting to spend the money on that or their own funds? Is that something that's possible?
I think it's possible. I, you know, going through the process of, you know, trying to reclaim right of way, it can be complicated. Each one is different. Sometimes the city attorney is involved, sometimes they aren't. Sometimes it's an easier process, sometimes it's not.
Okay. Yeah, I was just clarifying that I, I wasn't under the idea that we should be doing that. So I, I do think that this is, the drainage definitely needs to become a priority. And I think that, I think that the path should be too. I've utilized it my 20 years being here. So I would like to see what, if we can get some idea of cost as to an engineering design along with drainage, well, I would say solutions, if that's possible to get. I know it's, it's a big, a big ask. But yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to know a little bit more about cost, longevity, and things like that. Thank you.
I would generally agree with that. I think it's a very important asset to the community, and we should just learn a little bit more about it and see what it might cost and, you know, weigh those decisions with the finite resources that the city has against the other projects that need to be done.
Did staff have something to add?
No, I don't think at this point it's...
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So I agree with Councilmember Morgan, Councilmember Pedersen's comments regarding the Depot Hill. I think there's some critical things around this with the whole entire pathway. You know, we talked about access for the community, who uses it and stuff like that. I would propose, I've been up there quite a bit. I've talked to many of the homeowners. I've talked to many of the homeowners that are not even completely affected, you know, maybe say like further on down the street. But looking at the difference in, let's say, information that gets issued out, I think the report tonight was great, but it's a lot of information that gets brought out at one time. And I think previously, as we discussed, maybe a year ago or something like that. So I have talked to some neighbors up there and community members, and I would like to propose, to see if council will be fine with this, is engaging with the community up there and forming some kind of steering committee that would be, that they would be able to try to pull some of this information together. We have these reports. I know there was a drainage report about 20 years ago. I heard the number was like $4 million. Could we do the drainage? And that would, maybe that number's not accurate today. And you can correct me if that number's wrong. But, you know, I think when we look at some of these ideas, there was a steering committee, I think, back in 2018 that was looked at. And it kind of took what the community thought, what those issues were, and then tried to pull them together and came back to kind of a report from the steering committee on the different options that we'd have. And so things that we could look like up there from the steering committee is review the property lines at the same time with city staff and what those impacts are. Some of the own property owners I've talked to up there have automatically have already said, we're more than happy, you know, to move our property line back to where it needs to go to. And that's, that's what's positive about our community. They understand that when there's challenges, we need to all come together, work on them. I talked about reviewing the drainage, reviewing all the past reports, getting all that information pulled together. I want to be very sensitive as council member. Orbach was talking about, about staff time, and that's why I think it'd be great to have a steering committee pulled together to look at this information that the city could give to that committee. They could pull that information, they could review it, and kind of ascertain and get into the, I guess, the details and look at what the options are and kind of as a community. Not that that pathway is only for the Depot Hill community. It's used by many, but it'd be a great way to look at how it's used and what are those different elements around that. I think it's very important to note, looking at this information and how fast it's moved recently, it is unsafe, okay? The signs are up there now, and it's closed. I think, you know, I think the first reaction is to remove the property line and move the, remove the pathway back there. But like Jessica says, and I've looked at some of the drawings, drainage is going to be an issue up there, and we don't want to create another issue around that and just moving it and thinking we're adding a pathway because the way it's all graded, the drains are in a certain spot for the drainage to work as it is today. And if you took out, the elements are up there now, you could be creating another issue. And so throwing out that as an idea about a steering committee or something like that. I have reached out to a person up there who is Paul Esty. He is our Chair of our Planning Commission. He's offered to, if wanted to, that he would look at being like the maybe the steering person of the steering committee. And going out and reaching out to some community members, I would strongly encourage that we add somebody on it from, you know, the Monterey Bay Trail, you know, have somebody like that. A council member would like to be on it. A council member would like to be on it, to also be on it, to include members of the community that want to be involved and keep this as a small group, but to review the information in detail and then have them come and give us a presentation, kind of what some of their thoughts were so that we are, have more information in front of us other than a fabulous report that we got with a lot of information when I just make a final decision. And so I'd like to throw that as a starting point that maybe see if we could build from that.
I'd like to echo a lot of the, you know, similar sentiments. I think we really do need to work on this drainage issue to prolong the life of the cliff for as long as we can. So we do need to put some resources behind figuring that out. And then the safety concern considerations, right? That fencing, you know, that was built less than two years ago is now no longer secure or safe for public use. Many councils before us were faced with these same questions and they voted to let nature take its course. It's, it's hard. It's really hard because I feel like it's, it's a losing battle because nature always wins. The question we should be asking ourselves is, should we be using public funds to protect private property or should we be using public funds to protect public infrastructure like Cliff Drive? I think to me, we should be prioritizing funding for projects with greatest community benefits. Cliff Drive is facing a similar challenge, but it has public access in terms of parking and it has critical infrastructure like storm, like the storm, you know, sewage lines that you mentioned. You know, I trust our scientists and our geologists and I really want us to weigh the costs of action versus inaction. I'm not sure there's much we can effectively do that we can afford because it's in the millions of dollars. So I want to be sensitive in terms of the limited time that we have as a city and our resources and the priorities of the project. This is, this is hard. I mean, I've walked up those eighty-five steps onto Grand Ave as well and it's not ADA accessible for many people. Yes, there are beautiful views and there are currently some benches there right now, but I mean, it's eroding into the, into the sea. If the engineering study can give us more information and it's not a ton of money and if that's what council wants to pursue, then that's what council wants to pursue. But I think it's really, really challenging.
I'd like to say that I, I believe we should try to do everything we can to help the residents up there and for the beach access, even though it's only visual and because of the verticality of the cliff, but need to do everything we can to keep it open, look into the options that we, we have. And I really like the idea of a community-based steering committee with people who live up there and people that don't live up there that visit, but, you know, doing a deep dive into what, what we can do and go from there. I don't think we need to make a decision tonight, but I really like the idea of that, some type of committee.
I think I also want to point out, I think Jerry mentioned this already, 2017, 2018, we did have an ad hoc committee for this very reason and I think Kristen Brown was on it for a whole year. They looked at all of the options and presented it to the planning commission as well as the city council and both groups denied that, the, the, the plan to move forward because it would cost millions and millions of dollars. So I just don't want us to repeat history. I, I get wanting to do everything we can for the residents there. I do get that, but I also want to make sure we're learning from history and really considering our limited resources and the time it'll take to request for those right away and build the new path by hand. Just a lot to think about.
At this point, we don't need a motion. We just want to give direction back to staff on what we would kind of, kind of like to do. And I, I would be leaning to what Councilmember Jensen's idea of a steering committee with, with the public, with the council member.
I have a comment about that.
Just want to be clear, the council is not forming this committee. This is not a Brown Act committee. This is a committee that Councilmember Jensen, it sounds like some other member's suggestion, will form itself amongst the public and they will appoint a spokesperson presumably, maybe, and that person will come back and report to the council. But the council is not forming this committee, correct?
That's correct.
Very good. Thanks.
So does that mean that we would not have council representation on the committee?
You would not have council representation on the committee, but if a council member is an interested member of the community and you would like to go to meetings, you are certainly welcome to. If there's a quorum there, you should not speak, well, you should not go if there's a quorum because then it would be a council meeting. I'm not trying to be cagey here. If the council, there are certain committees that can be formed from the dais. If this is a Brown Act, if the council directs the activity or the formation of the committee, it's, it's covered by the Brown Act, which means that the city would need to staff it. We'd need to publish agendas, that they could only talk about what's on the agenda. It would really, it restricts, as it does for this council, it would restrict the committee. So I, I think that what Councilmember Jensen is suggesting is something much more kind of loosely organized by the community.
Yeah, and I would look at reaching back out to like Paul Esti, who's offered to, let's say, be the chair of this volunteer group to come together, said it, you know, hopefully set expectation that they could report back in a six-month period, something like that, and then try to limit staff's obviously input, but any information they need about reports and stuff like that, I think would be very, you know, would be a great asset for them to be able to get that as free as they would need. And then the second part to be that, when they did come back, Jessica, do you think you could have then some proposals for us on what we look at, some potential costs? Like, I think what I've heard from you is no matter what options picked, we have to do something up there with the area drainage. And so would you be able to bring that back so that that would be something that would be authorized looking forward, just, I mean, you know, six months, it'll be raining again, so.
In six months, staff can come back with refined costs for the options. Yes.
Thank you.
Is council in agreeance that we need to move forward with the encroachment take back or are we not going to visit that until?
I, I would personally like to have that being reviewed at the same time and I don't think that'd be obviously by a volunteer group, but having staff look at what that is. And so when it all come back together, we can be looking at encroachment, what the cost for the drainage is, and then looking, have us report back from the local community group.
I just want to add that, for one, I have a huge amount of respect for Paul. I think he's a, you know, does a great job on the planning commission, really bright guy, knows the area. But I would advise to, however this committee ends up being formed, which is out of our hands, that it be not just comprised of residents who live within, you know, a couple hundred feet of the area because I think that would show somewhat of a conflict of interest and to invite people from across the community to weigh in on this issue. I think that would give the committee's findings a lot more merit. Thank you.
I know Paul Esti is your appointed planning commissioner, which was a great selection. We can make sure that, I think, communicate that with him. I had a conversation with him recently and he completely understood that as making sure it's far outreach, so thanks for sharing that.
So I think there's two options to proceed. One is, I'm hearing a little bit of a consensus from the council to maintain the status quo for about six months. Staff would provide some information to this group that Chairman Esti, from the planning commission, is going to form and we would bring the item back with updated cost estimates for the different options. The, the one, the one point of direction which would be helpful to get some council feedback on is can we take that fourth option off the table? Because we could spend a lot of time talking about what bluff armoring would look like for all of Deep Hill. In the past, the city has said that that's not an option, that's probably making up a number, a twenty or thirty million dollar option. Can we, is that an option that if we take that off the table, then can we do more work and get you better answers on the other three? Would that be acceptable?
I accept that. I think bluff stabilization is not, should not be considered.
Was that the option for the diverting the water or was that just the stabilization?
Julia, could you pull the slide?
It was option four. Many millions of dollars, the most advanced option.
Most expensive, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Which coastal commission probably would not approve of anyway.
It'd be a very complicated project. This is the summary slide showing the four different.
That's all I wanted, thank you.
Yeah. So what I was hearing is sort of council consensus around going through those first three, getting better numbers, getting some information for Chairman Esti. He'll come back with his committee's report six months from now. In the meantime, we would maintain the closure, make sure it's secure and safe.
I would say I would be fine with staff not utilizing resources regarding the bluff stabilization option, but I would say, you know, this, for the citizen committee, if that's an option that they feel that they would like to pursue on their own time and research, I don't have an issue with that per se. And then the one thing that you didn't cover was looking up or getting some more information regarding the possible grants, not just the possible project costs.
Is everyone in agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we have two more items, B and C, at this time at the, looking at the clock. We're going to take a three-minute recess and we will return.
Good evening again, mayor and council. I will be brief. Most of this presentation is given by the county public health. Next slide. So we're here to talk about the potential of drafting an ordinance to ban filter cigarette sales in, in the city of Capitola. There's a little bit of history to this for a regional policy effort. In May of 2023, the county board supervisors formed an ad hoc committee to develop a regional policy in regards to filtered tobacco sales with the main concern being cigarette butts. Capitola had representation. Councilmember Peterson was on this, was invited to this committee and also had previously requested this item be agendized for council. Next slide. There are areas in the Capitola municipal code that restrict use of tobacco products, including smoking in indoor places, sale of flavored tobacco. And then the council adopted an ordinance also with the same effort in 2023, identifying tobacco waste as a threat to public health and the environment. Next slide. The county did move forward and passed an ordinance adopted in October of 2024 that prohibits the sale of tobacco filter products in unincorporated areas of the county. There is some stipulations to this ordinance, that being that enforcement would not begin until January 1st of 2027 and also that two other municipalities, so two of the cities, need to approve a similar ordinance before it be put into effect. So if January 1st, 2027 passes and no other city has passed an ordinance, the ordinance would not be in effect in the county. Next slide. During the regular COE Commission on the Environment meeting in March, they received a presentation from Santa Cruz Public Health on this item and they unanimously voted to recommend that the council adopt a similar ordinance. So next slide, please. This evening, we have that same presentation from Tara Leonard from the Department of Public Health and she will take it away from here.
Is that on? Great. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Mayor Clark. Thank you, council members. So yes, next slide. Tara Leonard, Tobacco Education and Prevention Program at the Public Health Department, County Health Services Agency. So we're here today to talk about the most littered item on the planet. And when I say most littered, I mean most Leonard. Four point five trillion of these babies are on the face of the earth at any given time. Next slide. That's a big number, so let's bring it down a little bit. Save Our Shores in just the last ten years have collected, as you can see on this slide, almost half a million cigarette butts right here in Santa Cruz County. And Katie Thompson, the executive director of Save Our Shores is here tonight if you have any questions for her at the end of this presentation. And then let's bring it down a little more. Capitola. What you see on the slide right now is information just in the last about year and a half of cleanups that Save Our Shores has done with the city right here at Capitola Beach. And you can see that cigarette butts are among the top five items collected and among the top three identifiable items collected. We don't know what those pieces of paper are, we don't know what those pieces of plastic are, but we know what cigarette butts are. Next slide, please. And all of this is supported by data from NOAA, the National Association, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. They did a study in 2023 that looked at five years of data on the shores of the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary and they found that 24.5% of all the litter on the shores of Monterey Bay was attributed to smoking. That's an astounding number. And all it did was reinforce what those of us who have done hundreds possibly of cleanups in the last ten years already knew. Next slide. This is where I always like to stop and say, look, waste is inevitable, but tobacco butts are not the end of life of a useful, productive product that we all use. No, tobacco butts are the end of life of a deadly addictive product that every single year, just in the United States, kills almost half a million people, including forty thousand Californians. So it is actually adding insult to very real injury that seventy-five percent of these things are just flicked out of people's hands to continue that death and disease in our natural environment. Next slide. Filters are not just waste, they're microfiber pollution. You can see on that slide, that's actually Dan Hayfley at a Save Our Shores cleanup taking apart a cigarette butt to show us that one cigarette butt contains over twelve thousand microfibers that are comprised of cellulose acetate, a kind of plastic, with a suite of other chemical additives. And so you can see from the slide that cigarette filters release point three million tons of microfibers into our aquatic environment every single year. Next slide. And we know from a study from Abari a few years ago that microplastics are now found in every single column of the water column right here in Monterey Bay, which we consider one of the cleanest and most protected areas of our coastline. Next slide. Cigarette butts aren't just harmful to humans, they're harmful to plants, to animals, to marine life. The visual on the right about one cigarette butt dropped into a litter fish tank kills half the fish in it, a lot of people have heard about that data. But the slide in the middle is what really gets the kids when we go into the schools to talk about this issue. That's a famous, famous picture that was taken by a photographer in Florida on a beach of a black skimmer bird. There's a whole series of photos of the mother bird feeding its baby chick cigarette butts. Heartbreaking, heartbreaking. So the actions that humans take very much affect our environment and the non-human inhabitants of our environment. Next slide. And I was giving, I was giving a presentation to another group and basically a gentleman said to me, look, the only thing that really matters right now in terms of environment is CO2 emissions and global climate change. If you're not talking about global climate change, I don't want to hear about it. Here you go. Did a little research and in fact, there's all sorts of research that shows that in fact, one cigarette butt reduces fourteen grams of CO2 emissions. That's one. Now multiply that by the six trillion cigarette butts that are produced annually. So there is undeniably a link to global climate change as well. Next slide. And again, this is where we have to pause and step back and say, well, you know, sometimes you have to put up with certain unintended consequences to protect the health of smokers. Guess what? Filters don't even work. And guess what? The industry has known that all along. Filters were never designed to be a health tool. Filters were literally just designed as a physical barrier to keep loosely tobacco from falling into a smoker's mouth. That's all they were. And then along came the Surgeon General's Report on Smoking and Health in 1964 that showed without a doubt that smoking kills you. And all of a sudden, we started to see these advertisements that made tobacco filters sound like they were a health tool. Do not believe it. According to their own internal documents from way back in 1958, they knew that selective filtration of harmful compounds in cigarette smoke is a thermodynamic impossibility. So the argument that removing filters from cigarettes would cause more harm to smokers is not true. There's actually even studies that show that cigarette filters There's actually even studies that show that cigarette filters cause a higher rate of the most common form of lung cancer, which is called adenoid carcinoma. And that's because of the hard feel of a plastic filter. You kind of have to pull against it, and so you're bringing even deeper breath into your lungs. Next slide. All of this is bad enough, but the real kicker is that the industry takes zero responsibility for any of this. Big Tobacco basically externalizes their costs and forces the physical and financial burden of tobacco waste cleanup onto government agencies and volunteer organizations. In other words, taxpayer dollars. Next slide. And the costs are significant. The city of Santa Cruz served as a model community for this, this sort of estimated financial burden that the Center for Tobacco and Environment at San Diego State came up with. And I worked with their public health department to provide certain types of data. They fed it into the model, and they came up with the numbers that you can see up there on the screen, that basically the city of Santa Cruz spends over $2 million a year mitigating tobacco waste. And that means everything from like mechanical street sweeping to storm drain cleanup to education to outreach to signage to enforcement, $2 million a year. Next slide. What's the problem? Well, the problem is that current efforts rely on what in public health we refer to as downstream solutions. In other words, we try to solve them, we try to solve the problem after it already exists. And these are things like garbage cans and no smoking signs and litter enforcement. And the problem with all of those so-called solutions is that they focus on individual behavior change. Next slide. Instead of policy and systems change that hold the polluter responsible. I think, sorry, can we go back again? I think all of us have seen tobacco waste within 10 feet of a storm drain, 10 feet of a garbage can, 10 feet of a no smoking sign. I've done cleanups up and down the county, and I can tell you that when we do cleanups, sometimes as much as 30% of the tobacco waste that we pick up is within 10 feet of a no smoking sign or garbage can. So these are not solutions. They are important parts of this problem, but they are not a solution. Next slide. So as Jessica mentioned, the Capitola has two tobacco-related ordinances. The one relates to smoking regulations, where, when, how people are allowed to smoke. And then the second is your tobacco retail license, and that's where, how, and which tobacco products can be sold. So depending on how you decide to move forward, the way it's been done in other jurisdictions is this would be added to your tobacco retail license in terms of limitations on products that are sold. And just to give very quick background, you know, we started at the public health department educating about this issue in 2017 with cleanups and events and tabling. We were in the schools. Next slide. And we did cleanups across the country. And when I talk about doing cleanups, we're not just picking up garbage. Like I said, we're collecting data. We're asking, where are these butts being picked up? How many of them are near a storm drain, near a no smoking sign, near a garbage can? And you know, is this really who you want picking up corporate toxic waste? Is little children and Capitol school kids? I don't. Next slide. And it was very important, and we'll get to this with the ad hoc committee, that we took a data and science-driven approach. There are absolutely other types of tobacco-related waste, right? We all see wrappers, sometimes you see the little plastic cartridges. But we wanted to make sure that we were keeping this in a data and science-driven realm. So we did everything from key informant interviews to public intercept surveys. And again, we looked at all of that data that we just shared about what is actually being found on Capitola streets, parks and beaches, and streets, parks and beaches throughout the county. And what we discovered is it was tobacco butts. Next slide. Policy meetings, policy meetings, policy meetings, lots of kids involved. This is an issue that really resonates with youth. I think that a lot of times when someone like me goes into a high school and says, hey, you know, vaping is bad for you, don't do it, they're like, lady, they can't even imagine being 40, let alone being 40 with cancer. But when you talk about tobacco waste and you show them those images of baby chicks with cigarettes in their mouths, they're really grossed out by that. They're horrified. And that gives me a window to say, hey, you know what? If they're doing this to the environment, why would you trust them when they come at you with bubblegum flavored vape or who knows what? So tobacco waste has also been a really great prevention tool for youth. Next slide. So by 2024, again, as Jessica mentioned, all five of our jurisdictions, including the city of Capitola, passed resolutions recognizing tobacco waste as both a public health and an environmental threat. Next slide. And of course, one of those jurisdictions was the county. And what the county did is when they passed the resolution, they created a TPW ad hoc committee to study all the various policy options. They specified a deadline of January 2025 to come back with policy recommendations, and they also committed to contracting contacting the other four jurisdictions to urge collaborative action. And as mentioned, Councilmember Peterson was the Capitola representative on that ad hoc committee, so he might be able to add more information later. Next slide. What did the ad hoc committee do? Well, the ad hoc committee basically spent a year and a half engaging in an extensive outreach process with community leaders, nonprofit, youth, environmental advocates. We held all sorts of education outreach events, including, as you can see up there, a speaker series that was sponsored by Save Our Shores at the Long Marine Lab. We looked at all of the data and the various tobacco waste options, and we worked with county council to actually write a specific policy. Next slide. And how did we do that? Well, like I said, there's lots of different types of tobacco waste, and so we looked at all of the various policy options. I'm not going to read them all to you, I think they're in your packet. But more importantly, we used an evaluation criteria to look at all of those policies. And what we asked is, does it have an impact on the issue? What is our ability to enforce? Does it have public support? What is its impact on tobacco retailers? What is its impact on the jurisdiction? What is its impact on current tobacco users? What's the likelihood of the tobacco industry pushback, including like a lawsuit? Is there legal precedents, impact on public health, focus of responsibility? And there were some others, but we gave this a really deep dive. And the outcome of that entire process was that they decided to go with a ban, a ban on the sale of cigarettes and cigars with an embedded, single-use filter. And that's very careful language, and I think it's on the next slide. That the county's product definition relies on this idea of a partially inconsumable cigarette or cigar. You can read it for yourself, but I think the two things that are important is it only covers embedded filters, so not those like bags of filters that you see in the store that sometimes people choose to put on top of a cigar or a cigar. It's just embedded filters. And then it says that it's any material, including but not limited to, and then it goes on about plastic and cellulose acetate and other fibers. And that's why, the reason we did that is that was intentional, that we have learned from this industry over 100 years, that this is an unreliable industry. And so we have to be careful about how we word things so that they don't just do a little end run and to skirt basically the intention of the law. Next slide. So of course, your tobacco retailers are probably not going to be happy about this if you choose to move forward. And I know some of them are here, and I look forward to hearing their feedback. But in order to respond to that, again, in a fact-based way, we had the county look at what happened to our tobacco retailers following the ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products. And what they found is, you can see on this slide, is there was about a six-month readjustment period where we did see a 3.1% decline in sales tax revenues coming into the city. And then we saw a double-digit increase as consumers basically adjusted. Now, keep in mind, the county has almost 80 tobacco retailers, and the city of Capitola has 10. People say, well, why did that happen? The tobacco market is diversifying. The tobacco industry is changing. Big Tobacco knows that cigarettes are a problem for them. They're a problem because of the waste, and they're a problem because of secondhand smoke. And so more and more, we're seeing that we are, we're seeing a lot more uninhalable products, like your pouches and your chews, your zins. And so one thought about this is that smokers change their behavior and move to some of these other products. Next slide. So as mentioned, Capitola has 10 tobacco retailers. I don't know what else to say about that. I'm sure that if you decide to move forward, there would be an outreach and education process with those retailers that we went through both at the county and we are currently planning to go through at the city of Santa Cruz. And again, cigarette use is trending down. According to a 2020 California Health interview survey, only 6% of California adults still smoke. And what about the future of smoking? Well, according to the 2024 California Youth Tobacco Survey, only 1.3% of high school students report using cigarettes. So it's kind of a dying product anyway. Next slide. And I'm going to ask another question we always get, particularly from retailers, is won't smokers just get these products online? The answer is no, because Assembly Bill 3218 just passed, it went into effect on January 1st, and basically it says that if a product is not available at a local brick and mortar store, you're not allowed to mail that product into that jurisdiction either. Next slide. And certainly at the county, we found that this policy had very broad community support. And what's very interesting about this is, again, the intersection of public health, places like, you know, Paharali Prevention and Student Assistance and Breathe California and the Tobacco Education Coalition, coming to work hand in hand with our environmental organizations. For instance, the Cigarette Surf Board, and we also have the founder of the Cigarette Surf Board here tonight to provide his comments. Next slide. And sure enough, in October 8th of 2024, the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to ban the sale of filtered tobacco products with a caveat that Jessica mentioned, because they're very interested in making sure that this is as broad a policy as possible, because we understand, we don't just want people hopping right over to the next jurisdiction to buy these products. So they did write in that caveat that it would go into effect January 1st of 2027 or when two other local jurisdictions pass the policy, whichever comes later. Next slide. So where is the other jurisdictions? Well, the city of Santa Cruz is approaching this issue through their Health and All Policies Subcommittee. And in April, I think it's April 29th, actually, I now know, they are hosting a, this has been updated. April 29th, the city of Santa Cruz is hoping, hosting an open house for the general public. It's going to be at the Loudoun and Sullen Community Center from 5:00 to 6:30, and then they will be hosting a separate tobacco retailers meeting after that. They are tentatively planning to agendize a policy for a first reading on June 10th. And that's it for me. Do you want me to keep standing here?
So the staff, what staff is seeking from you, the council this evening, is to provide direction on whether to provide a draft ordinance on the prohibition of sale of filtered tobacco products, knowing that the development of this ordinance would, and eventual enforcement of this ordinance would land on our police department, having to do outreach to the general public, and both the retailers would all be involved with developing an ordinance. And we are all here for any questions you may have.
Great, awesome presentation. Bring it to council questions.
Thank you. I think you just touched base on it just at the end about enforcement. How does the enforcement part work on this?
Do you want me to? Sure. So as I mentioned, you have, you have an existing TRL, a tobacco retail license, and your, your police department is responsible for enforcement of that. And we have been in conversation actually about applying for some DOJ tobacco enforcement funding to help cover that.
Yeah. Is this working? Okay. So I attended the first presentation for this, and so we are going to explore a grant option. It sounds very similar to the grant that we have with ABC for that type of education and enforcement. I'm not really familiar with it right now, but I'm being, we're connecting with Scotts Valley, it sounds like, has the grant, and we might be the only jurisdiction that does not, I think.
Yeah, all five jurisdictions, the other four jurisdictions all do have tobacco DOJ enforcement funding, and the only reason the previous chief decided not to go with DOJ enforcement funding is because you have so few retailers. But as I said to, to Officer Ryan, that Scotts Valley has a similar number of retailers, and they decided to go after this funding, and they got about a quarter million dollars of funding.
My next question is, have we ran any numbers on what the potential loss would be to the city directly on from, you know, from a tax revenue base with having this ban put in place estimated? I know you had a percentage, but what does, I mean, is there any speculation on that?
No, we haven't run those numbers yet. We do anticipate there would be an impact.
And then what about from a legal standpoint? You know, if we live in a very litigious community and state, what, how does that apply into that?
So there's a number of legal precedences that are at play here, and in working with county council, they thought those through very carefully. And of course, the first is that this follows the same legal precedent as the ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products. Local jurisdictions do not have the authority to tell an international or national organization how to make their product, but local jurisdictions do have the ability, based on their information, if they think that a product is a risk to the health or wellness of their community, they can remove that themselves from the market of that product. And so that's what's happened with the flavors policy. And as of now, there have been absolutely no successful challenges to the flavors policy. The second legal precedent has to do with secondhand smoke and the concept that, first of all, there's no right to smoke. There's literally no right to smoke anywhere. But the permission to smoke legally ends as soon as your smoking negatively impacts others. And that's the legal basis for everyone, everything that we see around secondhand smoke, both indoors and outdoors. That legal idea is also at play here, that your permission to smoke ends when you start tossing toxic waste on the ground for other people to pick up.
So I can respond to that. My office reviewed the ordinance and did feel like it was lawful.
Thank you. And then just to take the conversations off for a second, so I appreciate what Save Our Shores, I participated in those before, but just wanted to highlight at the same time, Matt and Jill Arthur are here this evening, and they, I don't know if you have ever met them, but they, Capitola's salty, and they run a beach cleanup once a month in our community. And so a group of members come down that they spearhead and go out and do a village cleanup, beach cleanup. It varies from 20 to 40 people, and it's on a monthly basis, and I think they've been doing it for over nine years. And so I think, you know, the great things that you're doing at the same time at a very localized level, I really appreciate, and I appreciate their leadership in that thing, because as I participated in, and I think many other members that are here have, I can absolutely testify that most of the things I pick up are cigarette butts, and they're all around the little, if you want to even call it dispenser or whatever, five-gallon bucket, whatever's out there. But yeah, so just wanted to acknowledge their efforts that they put into Capitola and making a special, and I know with some of their proceeds on the, keep Capitola salty, they take that, that, some of that, a percentage of that money, and they give back. And I know they have purchased water filling stations so that, you know, another aspect of thinking about the, the community and stuff and the environment. So I'm just wanting to make sure I can acknowledge them for what their good work is, and maybe they could work together.
One more point on the legal issue. I did check on Friday with county council, and as of Friday, we had not received any sort of legal anything from the, from the industry.
Okay. And then maybe if you just, I don't know, do you know Matt and Jill?
Duh.
Yeah, maybe you guys should introduce, it's amazing what they do, so, maybe it's all participation. So thank you very much. Didn't mean to take the conversation off, but just wanted to acknowledge their efforts too in helping this issue.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It was really, really impressive and very thorough, and I was surprised to see a picture of my husband and my children there. Oh my gosh, I was like, wait a minute, that's my husband and my kids.
I know, they signed the waiver.
Yes, they did, and we participated also on many of the Save Our Shores.
That was so unintentional, I had no idea.
I know, I was like, hold on, you're trying to get my vote. So I just have a couple of questions. Is, I mean, what can the city do to minimize the impacts for these businesses? I know there are 10, and some of them are here. Is there a way we can phase it over time to make it less impactful for them?
So we are able to write our ordinance in whatever manner we choose to legally. The county ordinance, it's my understanding that the cities, the other two to adopt ordinances need to be of a similar type of banning filtered tobacco products, but the timeframe and other details don't have to be the exact same as the county ordinance.
That's my only question, thanks.
I have a couple, thank you. And thanks for the amazing presentation, a lot of really good information there. And these questions, I just want to preface my questions with that there. Not bothering to ask questions about all of the merits of. about all the merits of this program or proposed legislation, because the many merits are clear. But I did want to ask a couple of questions regarding firstly, I know you said that there has not been any legal action taken at this time, but have you had individuals, not necessarily lawyers, reach out to express their intention to pursue legal action?
I personally have not, and I would not be the person that they would contact.
Yeah.
I'm just public health. I provide the background and the information. The decision-making lies with the policymakers.
To your knowledge, that has not happened?
No, like I said, I mean, I checked with county council on Friday, and they had not heard anything yet. I mean, I can't guarantee anything.
Have there been any discussions related to possible ways to reduce negative impact from the business owners?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, when we were working with the county on this, we had a tobacco retailers' meeting. We sent invitations to all 80-plus retailers. Representatives of about 12 of those stores came to the meeting. I think we had a pretty good, robust dialogue. I think, however, that a lot of the conversation on their part was about other ways of fixing this issue. But in fact, the problem is those ways have all been tried and not worked. So in terms of ways that we can ease this transition, giving a two-year extended period before it would go into effect is very, is pretty much unprecedented, actually, in terms of a runway. So there would be a lot of time for these businesses to get rid of existing product and to bring on other product. Other than that, the county is open to doing other sorts of education and outreach to these stores. But I will be the first to admit that it can be difficult to replace cigarettes, because cigarettes are small. They're shelf-stable. In other words, you don't have to refrigerate them. They last a long time. But here's the best part about them. The people who buy them are addicted. So they gotta keep coming back. They gotta keep coming back. So in a way, you could say that that's a great business model. It's a horrible business model, but it's a, it's a good business model.
Okay. And has there been any other examples in the world where a municipality or a small area has banned cigarette-filtered tobacco products?
There is not. There are jurisdictions that have banned the sale of all tobacco products. So Beverly Hills and Manhattan Beach did that several years ago. They banned every single tobacco product for sale other than high-end cigars and cigar lounges. And there are a lot of tobacco, excuse me, a lot of jurisdictions that have banned the sale of electronic smoking devices. And some of them have banned the sale of single-use electronic smoking devices. In fact, Watsonville, when they put through their flavored policy, also banned the sale of all electronic smoking devices. But again, when you look at the data, there's two different types of waste streams. Electronic cigarettes are absolutely an environmental nightmare, but they're a nightmare that's happening in the legal waste stream. They're not what we're finding, just like tossed on the ground. Overwhelmingly, the data is showing that what we're finding, just tossed on the ground, is cigarette butts.
Okay. And one last question, more of a confirmation of understanding. It sounds like the fiscal impact for enforcement of this would likely be zero? No.
Well, we, the fiscal impact for enforcing it would require that we would have officers come in on overtime to do special enforcement operations.
I thought, I thought I heard that there was a high likelihood of receiving grant funding for this.
There is grant funding. I don't know what the likelihood is. It's, it's new to me.
You have an estimate of the fiscal impact to our city for enforcement?
I would say I'll base it off of the ABC grant that we are granted each year. And we don't have any issues spending around $50,000 on officer time for enforcement and education.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, can I just add? I mean, in the existing TRL, your Capitola Police Department is responsible of tobacco-related enforcement in all of these stores already. This would just be adding another aspect to that enforcement. They're already going in to check, make sure that they're not selling tobacco, they're not selling flavored products, that they have their, their legally required signs, that they have product behind the counter and not at eye level, you know, things like that. But this would be an additional burden on those officers.
Thank you.
Sorry. Would it be worth looking into that to see if we could get a more precise estimate on?
Yes, my experience with grant writing is that that's exactly what we would have to do. It would be part of the grant process, would be to dive into, what does it require? What are the costs, the outreach? I mean, our overall goal is compliance, right? That's where we like to start. So that would happen during the grant writing process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. I've been through this presentation twice, so I have no questions. And I thank you for it. It was great. We'll bring it to public comment.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name's Katie Thompson. I'm executive director of Save Our Shores, a local nonprofit many of you all know, dedicated to protecting and preserving the Monterey Bay. I'm here tonight to express our strong support for the ban on filtered tobacco products. Cigarette butts, as we've seen, are one of the most common items we find, not only in Capitola, but across Monterey Bay beaches during our coastal cleanups. Over the past 10 years, we have collected nearly half a million butts, despite the many attempts to decrease the litter through non-smoking areas, more receptacles, or increased enforcement. Cigarette butts may be small, but they're toxic. They're made of microplastics and filled with chemicals like arsenic and lead that leach into our waterways and threaten marine life. Capitola's coastline is one of the most cherished and iconic in California. It's a vital piece of our region's natural beauty, a driver of the local economy, and a source of pride for residents and visitors. Every cigarette butt tossed on the ground damages that reputation and directly threatens the environment. By adopting a ban on filtered tobacco products, Capitola has the opportunity to be a true leader in environmental stewardship, not just following the curve, but setting it. This is a powerful step that shows that community values clean beaches, healthy oceans, and the well-being of future generations. We urge you to take bold preventative actions. Let's protect what makes Capitola special by banning the sale of filtered cigarettes. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, council members. I'd like to say thank you for hosting this council meeting and allowing me to speak, and many of my peers to speak as well. What I'd like to say is just a few points is that when we had the county meeting, our biggest concern was just pretty much somebody just going into a different jurisdiction, whether it be Santa Clara County or Monterey County, pretty much to buy tobacco products. And at the time that they were trying to pass it, was pretty much, we were in fear that the big cities, the big four, Capitola, Scotts Valley, Watsonville, and Santa Cruz would not do a similar ordinance. So it would affect the retailers of just bypassing that, you know, with customers coming over the hill, whether they just stay in Santa Clara, buy their groceries, and buy as many as you know, like add-on purchases. So let's say somebody buys a pack of smokes. They're not going to buy only that. They're going to buy maybe some beers. Maybe they might get gas. Maybe they might get groceries from this location. And so it directly doesn't only affect the sale of tobacco, but it will also affect the other sales that you guys put sales tax on as well. So there's, it might show on the graphs that there's a minor fluctuation, but there will be a more dramatic decrease in sales, especially since, like, there are only 10 retailers here. But, you know, with the other jurisdictions being so close, it would directly affect many of those retailers and many of those businesses pretty much losing that income, and pretty much other counties and other cities gaining in that income. Because, like she said, tobacco is a very addictive product. And those are items that people will just go seek out. And the other thing is, is too, as well, is the ban on filtered cigarettes, the other option of non-filtered cigarettes doesn't include that is also about 40, 50% more expensive for consumers. So most of the time, they will not purchase that. Many customers look at the cents and nickels of trying to buy these items. So they will most likely just pass on the retailer and just go shop somewhere else. And lastly, I would just like to say, like, you know, I think the better approach is to see percentage-wise of how much litter is done in the wintertime and the fall time, when like tourism, it's on a, on a lower end, versus on the higher time, when it's the summertime. Because though you guys might put the ban on, it might only affect the people who live here and the retailers here versus the tourism. Because if I'm a tourist and I go to a liquor store and I say, hey, I need a pack of cigarettes, filtered cigarettes, please. They say, no, we don't have anymore. I'll just stay in San Jose, buy it from there, and just bring my items there instead.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of the prohibition on the sale of filtered tobacco products in Capitola. And I hope it goes through all of the California coast and inland, so there aren't any discrepancies. My name's Neil Savage. And on my walk down Cliff Drive from my home in the jewel box, I picked up five cigarette butts in the gutter. Each of them lined right up to go down the storm drain and end up in our bay. Now, I happened to get five, and there are five of you. If you'd like any, I could provide this for you. And on my way down, on my way down last night for my weekly group that swims around the wharf, I picked up 11 cigarette butts. Despite those efforts, I'm sure, always swimming in the ocean with other misplaced cigarette butts every time I'm in the sea. I appreciate the City of Capitola taking a leadership position on this issue to help keep cigarette butts out of our beautiful city and our beautiful bay. When I spoke in front of the Commission on the Environment a couple of months ago, before they voted in favor of the ban, I pointed out that Capitola has a leadership obligation as a true beach town. I call this a true beach town because Capitola has more coastline per square mile than either of the more famous beach towns of Huntington Beach and Santa Cruz. So we have an obligation as a beach town. Please ask the city staff to draft this ordinance and then vote yes to ban cigarette filters sales in Capitola. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Ardip, and I own a business here, like my fellow businessman right there. And yeah, I heard the lady said, like, you know, throwing cigarette butts and cigarettes are causing this and that and that. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, but this is not the solution, just to stop in Santa Cruz or Capitola. It's not the solution. People will go outside, buy them, or they'll call their friends to mail them. There are a lot of ways they can get what they need. And I think we should put some kind of, you know, law so we can, whoever's throwing a cigarette butt, he should be fined. Or educate people when they smoke, throw it in a proper place. Instead of that, like, you know, she said that, okay, if they don't smoke cigarettes, they'll chew tobacco. What they do is chew tobacco and spit it on the floor. It's the same thing. So that's all I have to say. This is not a solution. Either we stop completely the whole California or whole country, or it's not the solution if you just stop like in Santa Cruz or Capitola. They're going to do it anyway. The more you stop it, the more they do it. That's what I saw in drinking, marijuana addictions, everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey, council, thanks for having me. Thanks for really looking into this for us. My name's Taylor Lane. I'm the creator of the Cigarette Surf Board. And I want to commend this man for picking up cigarette butts. I've actually handled over 150,000 cigarette butts. Majority of them have actually been picked up along the California coast, made into surfboards that are functional, allowed me to travel the world and learn about this issue. And every corner of the earth that we went, we saw these cigarette butts everywhere. And as I came back from my global travels, after being a resident here for 15 years and growing up in Venice Beach, I was just like a no-good surf kid. I'm now here as this, you know, activist towards an issue that is really harming our ocean. And it's these little microscopic toxic bombs. And I think it's less about what are the taxes we're going to make? What is the money that's going to be made? Is it the auxiliary sales of Coca-Cola? Or is it really about the health and the environment that, you know, this industry for decades has not really had a great track record? And this policy that we've been working on for the last eight years has really been focused about how can, you know, such a global issue be tackled through, you know, a grassroots aspect where, in the community of Santa Cruz and Capitola and this, in this whole California coast, I mean, we have a deep appreciation for the ocean. And in fact, so much so that we are guardians of the Monterey Bay sanctuary. You know, this is international waters that are protected under law. And it's our duty that it's not just about whether we're going to get tax money, more or less. There's a moral obligation, you know, for your generation, for my generation, for the generation that after us. No, no one else is doing this. And if it's not going to happen in a town where the ocean, the environment, our lifestyle is so tied to who we are, tell me where it's going to happen. Probably nowhere. And just like we saw with the plastic bag, plastic straw, there's so many things facing our ocean and the environment that it's not just about how much, we're talking about millions of dollars on the bluff, that's, it's going to all fall in, like, eventually. This is something that we can stop, we can do. There's already been, we've worked diligently for eight years. And it's really an opportunity, as you council members, to go down in history. Because, because people want this. The emotion that this gentleman had speaking on the issue. You know, I understand that this is a way of people's life to make business. But when it comes at the, at the extent and the threat of our environment, of our community, and all the harm that it's doing, that we can't even quantify, but we know how special this marine sanctuary is to us, I think we really got to consider something that's going to be a bold thing, that'll go down in your history as, as a council that stood up to powerful interests and paved the way for future actions that hold us accountable for our environment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, welcome, council member, or sorry. Hello, council, council members. My name's Dani Madon. I'm a health educator with the County of Santa Cruz. I work with Tara in tobacco education and prevention. I actually wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I just wanted to share a little personal story that hopefully will, you know, touch some folks here. I heard a little bit about the fear of smokers going to other jurisdictions to buy tobacco products with filters in them. And in 1995, California passed the Smoke Free Workplace Law, which made it just a little bit more challenging to smoke. And we saw smoking rates go way down. By making it more difficult to have access to a product, folks are going to smoke less. And this is personally really meaningful to me because my dad, my entire life, has been an on-and-off smoker. And I will tell you that the times that he quit was because it was inconvenient for him to smoke. And so if we bound, band together in this collective action and have all five jurisdictions buy in to banning this really harmful product, we just might see some of our residents be healthier and happier because it's just a little more inconvenient for them to buy a filtered cigarette. And so from the daughter of a smoker And so, from the daughter of a smoker who's hoping that one day her dad sees the light, we might be able to help other kids whose parents are addicted to these awful, awful predatory substances by making it just a little bit more inconvenient for them to get. You have to go thirty minutes, thirty-five, forty-five minutes over the hill or down to Monterey. Like, I know a lot of smokers who, that's just not worth it because addiction really is a spectrum. Yeah, some folks would make that drive and drive over the hill or to Monterey to get these products. But I will tell you that for folks like my dad, where it's like, it's more of an opportunity to smoke, you know, if his friend is smoking, maybe he'll bum a cigarette. But if you make it inconvenient for them, it could really make an impact on their health. So, I just wanted to kind of bring that to light, that if you could just make cigarette smoking a little more inconvenient, people might choose to quit. So, yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm, so I'm kind of very torn on this. My, my day job, I work to protect the environment as best as I can. And I just, when I think about this, I will be a non-smoker that will be driving out of the area to purchase cigarettes for my brother-in-law, who has schizophrenia. And, you know, I know there are studies, there's some studies that support it, there's some studies that don't. But what we can say is that those who are smokers can metabolize their antipsychotic medication better than those who are non-smokers. So, it was very challenging for us and our family to come to the realization that my brother-in-law was himself more as a chain smoker than when he was not a chain smoker. So, we will probably lose him to lung cancer, but we will lose him to lung cancer while he is more himself than he is not. So, as someone who really does want to protect the environment, as someone who really kind of does want to see this go into effect, you know, we will be the people who will drive, we will, you know, contribute those greenhouse gases, we will purchase these cigarettes to bring into their area because our brother, my brother-in-law doesn't have the capacity for that transit, to do it on his own, just for the sake of keeping my brother-in-law. So, it's, I just, I just want to make that statement because I do feel like this will go into effect, and I just, I just kind of wanted to make that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Matt Arthur, my wife and I have started Keep Capitola Salty back in two thousand seventeen, and since two thousand nineteen, we've been hosting beach cleanups once a month, first Saturday of every month, from nine AM to nine forty-five down in Esplanade Park. And we come in after all the city staff, so Jessica compliments on the staff down there in the village that cleans up, gets in, takes care of all the macro stuff, some micro, they get in, they're out, they're gone. Half the time, we don't even see them because we're up after, I'm up early, I see them, but I get to see the job they do. We come in after, after the fact, and when we do our beach cleanups, we see a lot of the micro stuff. Sun's up, the light's out, we go around the gutters. So, we get to pick up quite a bit of little micro trash. Most of that micro trash is cigarette butts. So, I completely concur with Save Our Shores, and thank you to them for the presentation. Amazing. So, we would definitely support. Love to see you guys out there, if you guys choose to come out Saturdays, one Saturday a month, for forty-five minutes. It's a good time, meet community, get involved. But if you guys were to choose to adopt an ordinance, we would definitely be in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
City Councilmember, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Like others here, during my day job, I work for an environmental organization, and I've, over my ten years of working there, I've gotten the opportunity to speak over twenty thousand individuals about the merits and, you know, the greatness of protecting our environment. And in that time span, one common thread has been the oceans and the ocean being unified to all of us. Now, to provide a little bit of more background of who I am, I grew up about seven miles away from Huntington Beach, that was referenced earlier on, and yet, the first time I went to the oceans was until I was ten years old. Now, that was in the shores of Baja, California, and everywhere I went, I saw what the mitigation of untapped regulation can do. Coke bottles, cigarette surfboards, and as a youth, I was like, man, this is wild. So, I guess the reason I'm saying that is if y'all could take the leadership to prevent that from ever happening to any other child or for our oceans to be protected, that'd be a great step moving forward from your leadership and what the legacy that you can provide would be monumental. So, thank you all so much for considering the efforts and banning the sale of cigarettes with those tobacco filters, and thank you so much to Save Our Shores and all the work that they've been doing to protect the environment.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, we're ready back for council deliberation. Time to start on this side.
No additional questions, it'd just be more of a, no more deliberation, but just a question, I guess, to our chief. I heard the comment before, a previous chief did not go after the grant funding. Was there, is there a reason why? Is there a downfall to it? Or just again, it sounds like there's some cost of enforcement that we might be doing already, and there's some grant funding that offset that. I was wondering if there was more that you could share around that?
I, there, I don't have a lot of insight as to why we passed up an opportunity, being that we're a smaller, smaller jurisdiction, you know, grant funding are great opportunities, especially if you're gonna develop a special team like that.
Okay, thank you. I have no other comments other than strongly support the banning. I'd like to listen to my other council members' comments.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I really appreciate the deep, comprehensive data and science-driven approach that you took to the policy to ban the filter cigarettes, tobacco products. I think for me, as a mother, as a healthcare provider, as a climate activist, this is a no-brainer to me. I see and treat addiction in my practice. I see my eighty-year-old COPD patients in walkers still continue to smoke cigarettes because they're so addicted. This truly is a collective action problem. And tobacco waste, we all know negatively impacts human and ecosystem health. It's also a fire, fire hazard and costs taxpayers millions and millions of dollars. I think eliminating these non-essential and harmful filters will significantly reduce pollution, protect public health, and lessen the financial strain on our local governments. And it's truly the right thing to do for our oceans, for our, our safety. So, I will strongly support adopting this ordinance.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for sharing personal stories, personal anecdotes. I think we all have had some story related to cigarettes, cigarette smoking, the litter. During COVID, actually, we didn't contract with our Hope Services, who help us clean up a lot of the debris around the village. So, I was down there a lot by myself. I was astonished to see how many cigarette butts I picked up in the height of COVID, when you were seeing masks and gloves and everything else just being disposed of as if it didn't matter. Yet, the cigarette butts by far exceeded anything that I, that I picked up on my, on my own. Capitola has done these projects. We have receptacles for cigarette butts. We have trash cans available. I, just this morning, on my morning walk, walked by one of our palm trees on our esplanade that has lighting that our Public Works puts up to enhance our beautiful village. And inside, the lining of all the lights was just but, 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 but. And that, to me, just is unacceptable for where we are. Granted, that's not in the ocean, but just imagine that a millionfold in the ocean. I understand that this may cause some strife for some business owners, for some tax dollars, but I think, unfortunately, I think our city and ocean health has to take precedent here. So, I strongly, strongly want to enforce this. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I'll be brief as it's approaching nine PM. I am strongly in favor of this ordinance. I think it's a really amazing opportunity to show leadership in the areas of environmentalism and public health in Capitola and throughout Santa Cruz County. Having said that, my, my one caveat is that I would also like to, this may not be too effective, but to see if there is any way in which we could reduce the negative impact to business owners. And to be clear, that does not include undoing the ordinance that, that I'm promoting here, but there may be other opportunities to, you know, increase other products or work with economic development organizations, you know, or staff members from Capitola to try to reduce the impact as much as possible. So, yeah, it's, really appreciate everybody coming out here to talk. It was very inspiring to hear from all of you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm in agreement with this action. It's, it's about time that we step up, and I used to, we'll probably be one of the first of the four cities to do it. So, looking forward to have staff move forward and make it part of our, of our five-point-three city municipal code. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I mean, it sounds like we'll come back with the draft ordinance for your consideration. We'll try to come up with some ideas about potentially mitigating the impacts to businesses to at least put some options on the table.
Thank you, everyone. Raise this to our last item, nine C, e-bike safety.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm getting pestered over here. Can we get the slides up? Perfect. So, this item, this item is on the agenda this evening to consider potentially, first get a briefing of the kind of city's overall approach to bikes, and then secondarily, to consider drafting a letter to our leaders in Sacramento about potential statewide e-bike regulations. First, I want to acknowledge that there are a lot of benefits to bikes and that sort of revolution we've seen in transportation and mobility over the last several years. E-bikes obviously have much lower emissions than ICE vehicles. It's people getting outside, active transportation, it's lower costs. Also, as I've experienced myself, having had a teenager go through this time period, there's a real convenience factor for having a younger child who, sorry, older teenager, but who goes through the independence that an e-bike can offer in terms of transportation, mobility, and not needing to schlep your kid around. At the same time, there's also challenges. We've seen a lot of challenges in Capitola around, sometimes with younger riders who are unfamiliar with the rules of the roads, sometimes using what we see as unsafe riding behavior with multiple people loaded on a bicycle. There is also issues with the speeds associated with e-bikes. While technically, a class three bike is limited to twenty-eight miles an hour, there are a fair number of unlocked or sort of semi-legal e-bikes that are on the market, and we do see pretty commonly around town. So, there's certainly challenges as well as benefits. Really quickly, just to sort of set the stage, for those of you that aren't familiar, there's three classes of e-bikes. E-bikes, by definition, have engines of no more than seven hundred and fifty watts, and a class one e-bike will pedal assist up to twenty miles an hour. A class two e-bike will pedal assist or throttle to twenty miles an hour. And then a class three will throttle to twenty and pedal assist to twenty-eight. The only restrictions on any of these classes of e-bikes are for class three e-bikes, you have to be sixteen years or older. Otherwise, class one or two, you could be four years old and you can ride them. Maybe five. So, one of the things we've observed anecdotally, both locally as well as regionally, is that the class two e-bikes tend to be, tend to be a bit of a problem area in that when, as soon as riders have a throttle, they tend to have less engagement sometimes with the act of sort of cycling. So, there are also issues that we do see with the sort of beyond category bikes, and we do actively enforce those and even confiscate them, and Chief Ryan will be talking about that in a second. Next slide, please. In fact, she's gonna be talking about that right now.
Thank you, City Manager Goldstein. So, as, as I reported out, we have participated and collaborated with New Brighton Middle School to do education and outreach. We've also attached ourselves to the CHP Bike Rodeo because they hold it in the Capital Mall parking lot. And you, I'm sure you see us on social media, as well as something that is not listed here, but as council may recall, we did the two-week pilot program where we had specific outreach during the time that the kids were coming and going. Thank you. And, and we had the thirteen warnings, and it really, because it was both thirteen, so thirteen warnings and thirteen citations issued, but we also really found that a lot of our local kids were pretty respectful with traffic. And I would say that that has a lot to do with outreach and involvement with them. And we've also had, we have impounded two e-bike motorcycles that were way too fast for the youth, so.
A question you might ask is, why don't we just adopt our own rules? And honestly, I think the challenge is pretty obvious. We're only two square miles, and having different rules than the county right adjacent to us, I think would be impossible to enforce, impossible for people to understand. And so, one of the things we've talked about is identifying at a state level legislation that could be adopted to create consistency across the board. I have been in conversations with Scotts Valley and Santa Cruz. Scotts Valley has indicated that they are, I think, on board with these same proposals that we're gonna go through really quickly. And I know the city of Santa Cruz is also potentially considering it as well. So, it seems like there may be some potential coalescing around these ideas. And there's, oh, in addition, I also met with Ecology Action to talk to their legislative director about what his input was around sort of potential legislation around e-bikes, and spoke to People for Bikes, which is a nationwide advocacy group for bicycles. And so, those different conversations all influence kind of the recommendations that you see in front of you today. And there's three components to the recommendation, and they're all open to discussion and input from the council. But the basic idea is, number one, is that the state could establish a minimum age of fourteen for class two e-bikes. Again, those are the ones that have the throttle, and it has been where we've seen more issues. Recall, the class three e-bikes have a sixteen-age limit, and at fifteen and a half, I think kids can get moped licenses as well, and mopeds are restricted to thirty miles an hour or four horsepower. So, there's already some of those things. In addition, staff is also proposing that the state implement, can we go back a slide? A regulatory, some sort of test permit for the fourteen to sixteen-year-olds. Right now, there is no licensing process for a younger age kid, whether it's online. I think that could be an option for the council to consider, whether it's, you have to go to the DMV, whether it needs to be the DMV, but that there's some sort of testing process so that you can demonstrate people know the rules, rules of the road for the younger riders. And then lastly, and this is something that Ecology Action suggested, is that in many other countries, there's traffic safety education built into the school curriculum. And I think that that's something, since the state pays for the schools, and the schools are often, I think, in a tough position to sort of do things outside of what they're required to do. I think as a statewide level, hitting every sixth grader with, you know, mandatory four hours, six hours of traffic safety, that benefits kids, whether they get an e-bike, they get a bicycle, they're just pedestrians, you know, it benefits everyone, I think, for kids to understand the rules of the road. So, those are the three components in the draft letter, and I'm available, available for questions.
Council questions? Start with whoever wants to go first.
I have a question. I'm curious to what extent data or anecdotal evidence exists to support the idea that class two is significantly less safe than class one?
So, I don't think we have any data to support that internally, at least. We have developed our own code that we are using in PD. We've been using it for about six months now, is my recollection.
We, December of twenty twenty-four, we started using it. So, we, we don't have a lot of data yet.
And so, we're identifying accidents that are e-bike-related, and so, we will be developing data over time. I did get the, the issues with class two did come up in both of my conversations with both Ecology Action and People for Bikes. We're bike, bike safety advocacy organizations, and they, they noted that they observed or they understood that there was less engagement when you just have a throttle than when you're actively pedaling a bike to move it. And I have, you know, again, anecdotally, I have observed that, and I think our officers have as well. But if you wanted to, we could research that. have as well, but if you wanted to, we could research that further.
I mean, more data is always better. I'm glad to hear that you are taking note of accidents in that capacity.
Moving forward, it'll be useful data since we're literally experiencing the e-bike movement as it's happening right now.
I think that's my only question for now.
I just read that Marin County passed a ordinance to ban class two e-bikes to kids under 16. Is this something we can work with our county supervisors on to enact an ordinance similar to theirs?
So Marin got special legislation through at the state and I think the county sponsored that basically that authorized them to do that. And so Marin, you're exactly correct. They set a 16 age limit for both class, well, class three is in state law, but then they set a 16-year-old age limit for class two locally in Marin. And that is another option is that we could, I've talked to the county, but we could talk about trying to do some sort of test thing in the county, whether it's the same thing Marin did or it's closer to what we, we were looking at in our letter. That would certainly be an option for the council to consider.
My only comments was from the letter that we received from Matt Miller with the Ecology Action, correct? Yeah. Just, there seemed like there was some pushback on a couple of the items and it was kind of alarming to me on some of their stances. And I was wondering if we, what was your interaction with them? I mean, you would think that they would really be, I was shocked by some of the pushback on some of their comments and I was wondering how was that conversation that you had with them and then some of the items, I think you and I have had discussions with about, you know, the, some of the pushback on a couple of the items. Are they, where are they trying to go with it? Are they trying to work with the county to implement some of the things? They're saying that they have concerns about the DMV being involved, cost and stuff like that.
Yeah, I had a lot of productive conversations with Matt and I certainly at the end of the day changed some of the recommendations based on their input. I understood that his position at Ecology Action or Ecology Action's position was they didn't want to put barriers in front of people to get e-bikes because they viewed them as both environmentally better, far less carbon emissions, as well as, you know, it's one less car on the road, as well as a lower cost option for people to, mobility option. I, I spoke with People for Bikes. They indicated that they wouldn't oppose the age restriction for the class two bikes, but Ecology Action obviously submitted a letter indicating that they didn't support that.
Right, and then worried about the DMV. I mean, the quote was engaging with the DMV could lead to electric bikes being reclassified as motor vehicles, which could be subject to similar regulations and include registration, licensing and assurance, which again is a barrier. So just, it was a little alarming to me. So I was just, I appreciate that you're shedding, shedding some light on that. And then I think the one other one that was, I think the other one that was really important on his closing statement, if you might just take a second to read is how the fiscal, they talked about the final note of how important about e-bike safety. Right here, I thought it was very important for us to all hear this as a community, is how the fiscal infrastructure of the city contributes to the overall safety of the roads. We believe an increase in bike ridership and electric bike, bicycles particularly calls for applying strategies and reduce exposure to high speeds, high traffic volume roads and the addition of bike facilities, traffic calming measures, protected bike lanes, protected intersections, and more important, the proven methods of to address road user safety across the board. And so I think as we talk about other issues going on in our, in our city, it's important to highlight the infrastructure about bike safety as we look at cheros and we look at, you know, safe path to travel for the youth as we're looking at this. So I just thought that was important that he highlighted as, as a big obstacle also at the same time. That's all my questions or comments.
My question is that this intent is to look at a bigger picture for statewide in this letter so that we can have it uniformly through the state? That's correct.
That was the thought. That was the thought was to submit something to our assembly members and kind of propose and hopefully get some support from Santa Cruz and the City of Scotts Valley and see whether or not they would be interested in sponsoring some legislation. Honestly, I didn't know what Marin had done when I started this project probably six months ago and was realizing that Capitola by itself was too small. And the idea that it could be a county-only idea is certainly potentially worth exploring. I think at the end of the day, this letter could still be useful because frankly, I think the issues that we experience here probably, probably are not, we're not the only ones. And a statewide approach could make things a lot cleaner.
I think we're better served at a statewide approach and we'd probably get a broader or less intrusive measures taken.
Yeah, and this next point I'll make, and I'm trying to make it delicately, is that traffic enforcement is different in Capitola than it is in the unincorporated and we're surrounded by unincorporated and I would expect that if we had specific rules around e-bikes that we would be, potentially have a different enforcement approach than our neighbors do. And so I think it could lead to inconsistency and challenges.
Got strangely quiet in here all of a sudden. Ours in my ears.
I didn't want to be perceived as criticizing anybody. I was trying to say that delicately.
Thank you.
So is there a way to adjust the age limit from 14 to 16? The reason why I argue for the higher age range is because the throttle assist is kind of like riding a motorcycle. I mean, motorcycle permits, I think also is what 15 and a half, 16 years old? I mean, I see these kids just throttle and go down the street and it's so unsafe. They're not engaging in the pedal assist. We're not banning e-bikes completely. They can still ride class one e-bikes, but the class two, to me, is more dangerous. And I mean, this whole movement even to, you know, with the anxious generation, Jonathan Haight, taking away play-based childhood and giving kids this, this phone-based childhood. I mean, the argument there is don't give kids access to social media until they're 16. And it's the same kind of argument that their prefrontal cortex just isn't developed well enough to make good decisions on the road. So if we can't trust them on social media, like why are we trusting with a throttle-type, essentially motorcycle? So can we be more aggressive and ban it to 16 and up? I don't know, just some of my, some of my thoughts.
I think if you looked at most of the kids on bikes now, they're the class one is probably the least used one and class two is probably the most popular. So that would be difficult to take it away from kids now that have been riding them for two years, they're 14 years old. I think this is a great start for us to move forward and get somewhere on this because e-bike safety is huge.
We're not in comments yet.
No questions on the way at this time. That was just, throwing that out as a question. Seeing no further questions from the council, we'll open it to public comment.
Just real quick, I don't think you'll ever know how many, unfortunately, how many injuries you really do get from e-bikes. You know, eight years ago was the trampoline. Before that, it was a skateboard, you know, snowboarding. Now I say, how did you break your arm? E-bike, how did you lose your tooth? Flipped over my bike or shoulder blades broken. My worst nightmare is I drive a bus and just making a right turn, you know, and I always have to look in the mirror because I just don't, it comes down so quick and I don't want to swipe somebody because, you know, that'd be devastating to myself and to somebody I injured. But I definitely do think that we do need some more bike safety. If you get some kind of program, I'd like to be a part of that as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm a lot happier about having to say this comment. Totally support e-bike safety. I daily a motorcycle regularly. I barely ever drive. The traffic is kind of terrible here. And I went through the CHP course. I got my motorcycle certification and I wear my armor everywhere I go, big helmet. I have kids in the little subdivision that I live in, they're ripping great wheelies on these class two e-bikes. And it makes me think of a joke that I remember hearing about pilots. There's old pilots, there's bold pilots and there's no old, bold pilots. And it kind of pertains to motorcycling a little as well. I, if these kids get to my age, I picked up motorcycling as an adult. If these kids get to my age and they're riding motorcycles, which are again effectively just big class two e-bikes, they will be much better riders than I am. I've been riding for just eight, 10 years now, you know, took the CHP course. I try to be as absolutely safe as I can, but if they ride for 30 years with the skills that they have right now, they will be very good. They just need to get there. So I just really want to advocate for anything, any systems that can be put in place to help them get there, to help them be safe and, and be smart out on the roads because it's, as every motorcyclist knows, every car driver is a assassin out to get them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back to council deliberation.
I have no additional comments other than I support participating in the statewide e-bike ordinances or changes that are being proposed.
Anyone else?
I also support it, but would like to consider increasing the age from 14 to 16. Yeah.
Okay, this take is, I believe, not going to be popular on the dais and perhaps elsewhere, but I do feel inclined to base my comments and decision makings upon my own personal deliberation, so I will speak my mind. I wholeheartedly agree with, well, let me just talk a little bit about e-bikes first. I believe that the rise in e-bike usage is really a revolution of transportation and mobility for multiple reasons. As mentioned by our city manager, there's health benefits, there are environmental benefits, there's economic benefits, and there's probably even more benefits of traffic, getting cars off the road. And because of my strong conviction that e-bikes specifically pose a new, better option for real transportation and real commuting within our community and beyond, I'm very hesitant to put up barriers or restrictions that may decrease usage, decrease adoption. That's not to say that I don't care about the safety of children or adults or anybody else who is using this technology for transportation. That's extremely important, but I think it needs to be based on data and I think it needs to be not overly restrictive. So option three, I wholeheartedly endorse incorporating traffic safety and e-bike education in the classrooms, I think is a no-brainer, should already be happening. The option number one or subject number one of establishing a minimum age of 14 or potentially 16 for class two e-bikes, I don't have any significant opposition to that, although I would like to see more data backing that claim up that class two is in fact significantly more unsafe than class one, given that they both have the same speed limit of 20 miles an hour. And option two is the, or subject two is actually the one that I have probably the most issue with specifically in its relation to incorporating a permit administered by the DMV. I don't have a strong conviction that there's anything wrong with requiring some sort of a test or permit. I think that would be more appropriate and less of a barrier to entry, to be held in the classroom or administered by our local municipalities rather than the DMV as the DMV is notoriously known for not being an easy system to navigate. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Can I, can I offer one point of clarification? So the proposed, certainly right now, the language is to establish a written test administered by the DMV for users less than 16 to use class two e-bikes. So it wouldn't be, if you went to a 16-year-old age limit, that, the point would be somewhat moot about including any sort of test thing at all for 16 plus. And certainly if the council wanted, it doesn't have to be the DMV. That's obviously the State Department of Motor Vehicles and that's one way in which it could be done. You know, in some ways this, you could leave this up to the legislature, you know, say, hey, we think that there should be a written test or something for the 14, 15-year-olds. You guys work with your legislative aides to figure out the best way to make that happen.
I could support this without the specific language of the DMV.
Well, back in the day, you used to get your permit through school, so it wasn't DMV-driven, so.
My conversations with People for Bikes, the Nationwide Bike Advocacy Group, they've talked about some sort of online testing kind of certification program that they're going to be offering and they're rolling it out in different states. So that's another option as well. But again, I think, you know, putting our legislators to work to say, hey, we, we support the idea that there's some sort of test and let's work with them to figure out what that looks like and we can take the DMV language out if that's the council's direction.
And I'll just add that I do also think that we should be looking for ways to actually increase bike ridership in Capitola amongst our youth and adults. And I think some of the, you know, topics that we've continually talked about is building robust, safe public transportation or transportation infrastructure for bicycle traffic is really important and we should continue to work towards those goals.
So I don't dispute the social, physical, environmental and mental health benefits for teenagers that they, that they gain by having the autonomy and the independence to get around on their own. There's tons of benefits and I agree with needing that physical infrastructure. We need better infrastructure so they're not riding on the sidewalks, so there are safe, protected lanes for them to ride safely on. I think my, my concern is really safety, you know? In light of the Clarence and 41st accident, I've seen these kids zip down without helmets. I live near 41st there. I mean, during the protests over the weekend, a ton of them rode down the really, really busy River Street intersection and just were mouthing off. I mean, they were teenagers being teenagers. I just worry about the safety aspect. So it's tricky. I, I 100% support the universal safety education as a essential curriculum in, as soon as middle school, sixth grade. And perhaps we can work with our board, school board trustees on how to implement that sooner rather than later than wait for a state mandate. And, and I also read the Ecology Action letter about, you know, the permitting process, the financial barriers, just adding the extra layer, you know? I don't know, it's, it's hard because not everyone can afford an e-bike, not everyone can afford the licensing and the permitting and all of that, adding barriers to, you know, the more marginalized communities. You know, is that, is that fair? I, I don't know.
Yeah, so I, I'm really in support of this. I'm open to allowing our legislative bodies maybe figure out, you know, maybe, maybe there is no cost. Maybe there is a type of program that we can, you know, develop, at least for Capitolians or just the students within our jurisdiction, so that it is accessible. I think these are things that should be mandatory. I think we're all in agreeance that the use of e-bikes has increased. While it has its benefits, it certainly has its worries for me and the city. I don't know if, if you would want to try to shoot for more of like a 15, 15 and a half, where that's like the moped age, maybe that's more of a middle ground that we can think about. Yeah, either way, I definitely want, I would be very happy if the mayor would sign this letter of support to the, to our legislators.
Just a question regarding the, the, what's being asked is for the mayor to sign this letter. But it's regarding state legislation that's already been drafted by, so this is the proposed one. So if we wanted to change something and take out DMV, isn't really legislation that's already being tried or being written up at this time? And so that'd be something like?
No, no. To be clear, this is a letter out of the blue we'd be writing to our assembly members. I've taken a look at kind of different bills that are out there in the state, and there's nothing really like this right now. So this would just be a letter from the mayor, so you can direct any change you want. There's no specific legislation at this point that this would be supporting or opposing.
Okay, I, okay, as I read what the action was, just to sign a letter regarding proposed state legislation for e-bike safety, and the representative for Don Addis and Gail and honestly, John. So I was just wondering, you know, are they going to, this letter, so you would just redraft the letter with some comments from our, and that we'd send that forward and then let them compile multiple different cities that are coming together, and that they would then be proposing state legislation?
So I think what would happen, first off, Capitola doesn't usually do this. We don't usually propose state legislation. Sometimes we oppose state legislation, but this is, this is a little bit new for us. But what we would do is send the letter, and then I'd follow up with our staff and just see if they wanted to sit down and talk. Obviously, I think we'd get a little more traction if Scotts Valley and Santa Cruz also sent similar letters. And I think hear from them about whether or not they might be interested in sponsoring legislation. I'm sure that they would hear from Ecology Action and other bike advocates, and they would do their research, and then ultimately, if they wanted, they would pick up and actually draft some state legislation about this.
And so my, I guess my follow-up just to it would be that is, you know, might be, I think you hear that the council is very much in support of this, but may look at the other local jurisdictions, because I could see, like, if we raise the age to 16 here and a kid lives in Live Oak, so he could ride his one-bike type in Live Oak, cross over to here, and then could have issues. I mean, I would look at trying to have it more uniform, so maybe a letter of support, but then that we're ready to write, but to see what our other local, you know, what the county's looking at doing and stuff like that at the same time, so that.
This idea would be, our assembly members would propose, or Senator would propose statewide legislation. So we would apply in Live Oak as well as Capitola. We're proposing rules for the whole state here.
I mean, I say, I guess not just, I guess I was looking for a letter that was for a wider base of that, of support across, other than if they got a letter from the county and says that they said 14, we're saying 16. You know, I mean, if we kind of united in the Santa Cruz County on what we thought was the, you know, best measure. So that's all my comment. I think we're all in favor of the same thing.
Yeah, I just think this is a great start. I know that it'll be fine-tuned, whether it's the county-wide or statewide. Statewide would be probably the most effective. But it's, it's a good start, you know, we're moving forward, and everybody else is already talking about it and moving on. So I think we need to do the same. I think we're such a big biking community, which is great, that, you know, we could take care of our kids and make sure they know the rules of the road and are safe out there.
Do you know Scotts Valley has said that they were prepared to sign on to this letter? Santa Cruz, I think, is still, we've gone back and forth with that a number of times. I think they're close, but I'm not sure. They may have a difference.
And the intent on this would be never limiting people from having the opportunity to have an e-bike or ride or, you know, have a mode of transportation. It's just the safety aspect. Sounds like we're pretty much all in favor of it.
Yeah, I agree to move forward. I mean, I, I think the county, if they want to do a ban, you know, I, I've text Manu, I've texted Kim. I think they're, they may be interested in looking into this as well. So let's, this is a start, like, we all said, let's just start with something, and we'll see what happens.
Well, it would be helpful maybe to get a motion. Sounds like Councilmember Peterson proposed a change to item number two. Councilmember O'Neal proposed.
Yeah, I think knowing that it's going to be bigger than just Capitola, it's going to be statewide, that this is just pretty much a generic start to the process. It's not going to be something that becomes law, obviously, and it's just a starting point for us. Does everybody feel comfortable with that?
I'm not sure if you are accepting the change or rejecting it.
Change being?
Remove the DMV language from option two.
I would be agreeable to that, and we can have it say something like, DMV online or through school. Sound agreeable?
Sure.
I'll move to approve the letter with the recommended adjustments to section two.
A second.
Madam Clerk, do you have enough?
So currently, the motion with a second is to direct the mayor to sign a letter to the legislature as proposed by staff with the removal of the DMV language.
I think the direction was to say DMV online or other administered or other resource. Is that, yeah, or other.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to item number 10, adjournment. Have a good night, be safe, take care of one another. See everybody at the special council meeting next week.